Okay, folks, it's 6:01. We'd like to start the meeting. Let me call the meeting to order, please. I'll use this. I'll use that. It's pretty heavy. Okay. Call the meeting to order, please. The time is 6:02. I would ask everyone to rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Once again, it's still a thrill to see everyone in person. So, thank you all for coming, and I'd like to thank our auditors who are going to be publicly interviewed today. Before I get started on that, we call our first -- oh, I'm sorry. We're going to need a roll call to see who's here.
Yes, ma'am.
My mistake. Go ahead, Mr. Gorsky.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Bierman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella. Mr. Nicky Tinsky.
Here.
Mr. Pelori. Mr. Rotsky.
Here.
Ms. Siegel.
Here.
Ms. Skirby.
Here.
Mr. Tofano.
Here.
Madam President.
Do we have a quorum?
Madam Board President, recorded as a yes, and certainly we have a quorum present this evening.
Okay.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted July 16th, 2021, at all schools on the district website at HTTPS backslash backslash WWW.MONRO.K12.NJ.us. The Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you very much. I'm so eager to get started. I missed a couple of things. All right. So, our next order of business is the interviews for our auditing service. I'm going to take the prerogative of the President and say that we will interview our -- we will publicly interview our auditors, and then we will leave the decision because we do have to deliberate just a little bit. We will leave the decision until our Business Administrator Section, which tends to be towards the end of the evening. We'll make a decision hopefully tonight, and then our auditors don't have to stick around for that. We can notify whoever we decide in the morning. If that's acceptable to you. If it is not, when you get up to speak, if you want to register your position, we would like to hear it. Okay? But I thought it might be easier instead of waiting till the end of the meeting and having you stay here the whole time. Okay? So, we'll begin. Mr. Gorsky, who is the first? Do we have anyone?
The first scheduled interview is with Mr. Gerald Stankiewicz, the current firm auditor with the firm of Samuel Klein Company pursuant to your request.
Mr. Stankiewicz, would you like -- yes, please, sir. The board members should have all of the audits. And, oh, Mr. Chiarella, the Chair of the Finance Committee, was going to actually lead this. Karen, will you be able to?
I can try.
You can do it. Okay.
Although I don't have any of the information, any of the questions.
Were the questions sent to them in advance?
The questions were sent to everybody with the standard answers provided by the firms, yes.
No, I bet Ken had additional questions.
I wasn't CC'd on that email.
Okay. All right. So, we'll have to -- all right. We'll start. Mr. Stankiewicz, please.
Madam President, may I be recognized for attending the meeting?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Ms. Pelori.
So noted. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Want me to talk? Okay, you're going to interview me at the end, or is --
Well, if you'd like to give us a brief, you know, description of your position, and then we'll have some questions.
I will. And then I'll also give you the answers to Mr. Chiarella's questions. My name is Jerry Stankiewicz. I'm a partner in Samuel Klein and Company, a CPA firm. We've been in business since, believe it or not, 1921. I emerged in in 1998 as a partner from a smaller CPA firm. I've been doing public school, municipal, search authority, fire district audits since 1980, and I've been the auditor here since 2003 as a result of the retirement of the predecessor auditor from another firm. I service -- our firm services many school districts of varying size and varying types of firms, types of cities, types of municipalities and school districts. It ranges from small to very large. Okay? I handle, at this present count, six school districts. Again, I work out of the Freehold Office, which is where I live, and I handle eight municipalities and a couple of search authorities. So, again, all I do is governmental entities, and I have a staff in my office of, right now, five people and two secretaries that handle all the basic primary auditing work. All of them are CPA candidates. One of them actually passed the CPA exam and has not got the time requirement in yet. What we do is, quite frankly, our audits are not fancy. Our audits are nuts and bolts. We get into the details. I participate in the fieldwork. I don't just come and show up for the, you know, presentation and/or the exit conferences. I'm there a couple of days a week reviewing things, making sure things are going in the right direction. We plan our audits out so that they are filed, and we plan them out with the vision that they be filed on time. However, sometimes things get in the way, like COVID, like a change of business administrators. So, but my history here has been we had a verbal agreement with Mr. Holliday and Mr. Gorsky that the audit would be filed. We would work first on this audit. Okay? And I know one of the questions was, you know, about timely filing of audits. It's a -- to me, for here, it's a non-issue. We give it our top priority. So, I have my staff here. As soon as we know we're engaged, we start working. The first part of the audit is to review the minutes and get a feel for what's going on, and then we get information from the business office relative to payroll, relative to expenditures, relative to revenue, so that we can then plan out what we're going to test and who we're going to test. All of our tests are done on a statistical basis. Okay? There's nothing magical about it. Every other firm does the same thing. You get the first check number of the year, the last check number of the year. You run a random sample, and those are the ones you pull. Those are the invoices you look at. Okay? There's no cherry picking, though, because I like this guy or that guy. We don't do that. It's all done statistically. We do look at invoices that are above certain dollar levels to make sure that those are filed and documented properly. The big thing that you want to look for when you have an audit, in all honesty, there's all kinds of things we test for, and I know the board president has heard this before, and that is, look, is everything properly documented? Yes. Is everything coded to the right budget account? Yes. Is everything cut off with respect to the proper fiscal year? Yes. And are we in compliance with the public school contracts law? Plain and simple. Similar with payroll. Did everybody get paid in accordance with authorization from the board? Are the payroll taxes paid timely? Okay? And was all the proper accounting work done with the filings for tax returns? We also here, because you have a very large operation, you have a very large food service operation, do look at their bills. We're not 100% required to, but we do a sample and look at their paid invoices. We look at some of their payroll records. We look at their revenue reports. They're required to file with you an internal control report that their internal system is set up to properly allocate and properly account for their expenses, because they might represent 50, 60 districts, and all the paperwork dovetails into one office. Well, they have an internal control report done as well. So, although we like to see that, and although they're wonderful, I feel more comfortable doing the -- going the extra mile as I do. So, we do that. We do the student activity funds. Lot of money going through them previously, prior to COVID. I know it's kind of slowed down a little bit, but there's a lot of money going through those. We do -- well, first, we insist that they be pre-audited before we get to the audit, because I would rather have someone inside find a boo-boo than us find it. Okay? And besides that, that's what internal controls are for, to catch something prior to your outside auditor catching it. We haven't had many problems in -- over the years I've been involved here with student activity funds. So, we do go through those. We look through the receipts. We look through the disbursements. We make sure. The most important thing with student activity funds is that the expenditure relates to student activities. One district we had, they bought a refrigerator for the teacher's lounge. No good. No go. So, we had to rearrange. They had to refund the mountain and get that worked out. That hasn't happened here. So, basically, what we do is we work the fieldwork under a normal circumstances. We are involved in the district in early July. Okay? And doing our preliminary work, and then we get hot and heavy with the fieldwork towards the middle of August. But like the number of districts that I represent, I try to get all the student activity funds done in time so that when the kids get back shortly after Labor Day, that all those records are back in the schools so the record keepers can have access to those records rather than not. So, we get those out of the way. I kind of rotate everybody that I do. So, in addition, speaking of rotating, I have staff who -- they're young. Okay? And they're full of energy. Okay? And with any job that I do, I rotate them. For example, the person who did payroll here last year will do payroll again if we're successful, but they won't do it a third time. Okay? It's a fresh set of eyes. However, within my firm, it's a fresh set of eyes. Okay? I'll shift them to another function or another district only to keep them active and also to get to know the other people in other districts. So, I have a built-in rotating system with that. Okay? So, one thing that we've already completed, as you're aware, we do the October 15th, 2020 ASSA work. Okay? That work is already completed because we've done that, as we have over the years, because prior to the business office hitting send to the state, the administration at the time started having us come in and do the audit prior to hitting send. It's kind of like an insurance policy. We check 100% of the IEPs. We check 100% of the free reduced, and we verify the attendance registers 100%. That's already completed. With regards to the financial reporting, we issue, in conjunction with the business office, there's two documents that come out of us. One is the thicker document, which you've heard, this report. That's the -- it's called the comprehensive annual -- they changed the name. It's now called the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Okay? So, basically, it's -- contains a lot of information about the district and about the township of Monroe. There's a statistical section. It talks about ratables. It talks about overall debt. Okay? But in there is also our opinion. Okay? And inside that document, the only that belongs to us really is the independent auditor's opinion. But we do -- we have -- our secretaries are really good in terms of doing all the, what we call, beautification of the audit. So, we kind of type it. Very few districts actually present the audit, like physically hand you it to -- very few. So, we kind of do that. But we also, as we go, we're in touch with the administration if there's a problem. We're in touch with them regarding looking at the exhibits and making sure they agree to their records. And as you've heard before, anything that's presented to us, there are no -- have been no audit recommendations or no audit adjustments. Everything is to the penny as presented to us. So.
Mr. Stankiewicz, let me, unless -- can you answer the rest of the questions?
Sure.
And then I want to open it to the board.
Will you be able to give us full and complete audit by December deadline? Yes, however, there is this health benefits information and pension information that has not yet been released by the state. It has been the cause the last three years of the filing deadline being moved from December 5th, one year to December 21st, and last year to February 5th. So, whatever the deadline is, if the information is presented to us timely, we can have it filed. Okay? Assuming the records are presented properly. And in one of our, believe it or not, one of our places, we just issued the report because the business administrator and the assistant administrator died during the audit. So, we kind of had a little bit of -- and the state doesn't grant extensions unless it's done by statute. So, yes, to answer two, can we be the first? Yes. And how many districts do we serve? The firm handles 17. I handle -- I make a joke. I handle either four and a half or six and a half of them because I do a component of a small district in South Jersey because the auditor has a conflict. So, I do the food service fund there. The auditor's wife is the director of food service. He can't touch the records. So, that's it, really. We do presently. Now, that could change, you know. That number could change as we move on, but pretty much we're set around 17.
Any other answers to those questions?
No, I think I got them all.
May I?
Shall we open it to the board? You ready? Okay. Yes, Mr. Rotsky.
Hi, Mrs. Stankiewicz.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Good to see you. So, you mentioned material findings, a clean audit, as you say, and not exactly sure how many years it's been here that we've had no material findings. My question to you is, do you see that as a concern? Does it draw a red flag to you that we've gone however many years without a material finding, or is that something we should be proud of?
In my mind, I'm aware. Okay? I don't get complacent. Okay? In fact, if you check my references, depending on who you check, they might say I over-audited, and I do that for a reason. I've been in some places for a long time. You know, I've been in one place since 1986. Okay? Another place since I was 22, 1980. Okay? As the staff guy write up -- oh, I'm totally aware of the second set of eyes concept. So, I up what I do, and not that we attempt to throw staff off guard, but sometimes they'll -- and they'll ask, you never looked at that last year? Well, we got to keep on our toes because there is stuff written about predictability of audit tests. Okay? I'm fully aware of that stuff. So, yeah, I up the game. And you know, it's almost like I go into like I can, not to be a smart aleck, but I can pick whatever fight I want and say, hey, let's look at this. Or let's try this. Or, you know, I want you to go down there and talk to that guy, and we -- maybe we did like, you know, 10 items last year. Let's add a few more to it. So, yeah. And the also other thing, too, is as a key personnel, like in payroll, if your payroll person is new, then it becomes, in my mind, not officially, but it becomes a little higher risk. We have to make sure that person knows what they're doing. But we also rely, like, for example, here, you've got two or three CPAs on staff, that they're checking as well before we get there, which is internal controls. Okay? So, yeah, I'm aware. Believe me, I've been doing this a long time, and I've had every knife thrown at me that you could imagine through the years. So, I'm up on.
So, I -- then if I could just go follow up on that. So, I assume then, year after year, you're looking a little harder. You're looking a little, like you said, you're mixing it up a little bit, maybe looking a little deeper in whatever areas you see.
Not necessarily deeper. I mix it up a little.
Okay. And you still, for the last few years, have found no findings? In Monroe?
No.
And you're comfortable with that?
When we first got here, we found one little tweak, and they addressed it immediately. Okay? And it had to do with a carryover problem from the prior auditor that, I guess, never properly informed, and they fixed it real quick in the payroll department. So, yeah, no, I'm aware. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Tofano.
Jerry, you just stated that you, in your business, feel it's very important to have employees that rotate because you want a fresh pair of eyes on numbers and whatever process you go through. Can you just explain to me why it's important to have a fresh set of eyes on these repetitive -- on this repetitive process?
When you get these younger people that do the work. I don't really do all the work, but they want to prove themselves as well. So, each one of them comes with a different perspective. We do have an audit program that they follow, but some of them quite are smarter than the others, and some of them aren't. So, I make sure that we're on top of them and that they get rotated so they don't get stale and that also that your staff, okay, doesn't say, hey, you know, we're familiar with this guy or this girl or whoever does the work. Yeah, I mean, that's why I do it. We rotate them.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Pelori.
Madam President, Mr. Stankiewicz, good to see you.
How are you?
Pretty good. You mentioned that you do about four and a half to six and a half.
Yep.
Let's just take the least number, four districts, right? Over the past five years, how many school districts did you give perfect audit report for? I can rephrase my question.
I would say if I've done six over the last five years, four of them have had perfect things. Others have had problems because of personnel change that created a problem that I need to keep the board aware of. Okay? Every now and then, some of the places don't do a good job on fixed assets, which is a pain in the neck of a job. And every now and then, sometimes we have to make a lot of journal entries to make the records more correct as presented. So, and that hasn't happened here, but other places it has. And we make a comment. There's a comment that goes in there. So. And we make sure the board is aware, politely aware. But what we've done, too, is if it's a comment one year and it's neglected or ignored, then it becomes a comment and a recommendation, which then requires board action, direction toward the business office to make a correction.
So, the audit usually has different levels of findings, right?
There could be, yeah. There could be.
And when you say that the audit is perfect, you're talking about at any level, you're giving a perfect audit because there's no --
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, the second question I have is, being the incumbent, did you ask to be the first one to be interviewed by this group?
I don't know that I had any preferential treatment because I'm the incumbent. I did get a phone call to ask what time, and I said, what's available?
Okay.
They're at 6:00.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Skirby.
Good evening, Mr. Stankiewicz. Just a couple of questions. You keep referring to your staff as young. Approximately, how many years' experience do they have? And did they have experience prior to joining your firm?
Their resumes are in the package. They all have about three years. It has a little more, the one guy that's certified. But, yeah, they're all two or three years. In public accounting, it's hard to keep people. That's what happens. Private industry is grabbing them. School districts are grabbing them. Yeah, that's an issue, and that's an issue that all firms face.
Okay.
And even though I've been doing this 41 years, that's why I surface at the jobs. And a lot of people wonder sometimes, what are you doing here? I'm there. Okay? I'm on top of it. Okay? So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stankiewicz, are you doing risk assessment auditing?
Yes. Oh, yeah. We're required to.
Okay. And you're sampling. How is that based? When you say sampling?
We utilize these services, and what happens with audits is you have sample sizes. Okay? And we're required to sample a certain number based on what we determine, if there's low risk, high risk, or moderate risk. Okay? And then from there, there's another parameter that's called tolerable rate or anticipated rate. So, it's all factored into those equations. Okay? And just so you know, I don't -- I actually do more than the charts that we utilize, that I think every firm probably does. I do more than the minimum. Okay? I'm not comfortable because it -- I came from a very small firm in 1980. Every client, regardless of the size, is precious. So, they get treated in special treatment. I do a little bit more because I need to get a real good comfort level.
Okay. On your page nine, you talk about 40 to 60 payroll checks and 40 to 60 expenditure checks.
Right.
So, you're doing a finite number, but not a percentage of the transactions?
No, you don't do a percentage of them. And by the way, I've done more here in the last few years. Those are based off the standard charts. Okay? Here, I've done more. I just feel the size of the district. Okay? Some firms will say, oh, that's what the literature says. I don't do it that way. I got to get a better comfort level by expanding the sample. That's a standard response in our RFP. And by the way, inside your RFQ, I believe, is some minimum numbers of sampling. So, we've achieved those.
And I have asked in the past, so I'm going to ask again, about your audit plan.
Right.
And you have been reluctant to provide your audit plan. Can you just explain why?
It's confidential, and it's an internal document, and that's why. It's just not an industry standard to provide the audit plan.
I -- only because, not that I'm not test, you know, only because I've talked to some auditors, and they said that it is something that could be asked of our auditor. So, I will ask all the other auditors if that is something they're willing to do.
Keep in mind, Mrs. President, the audit position answers to the board. You have a question at any time. I'm easily reachable. Okay? So, concerns, we can talk, but no, we don't give out our information.
Okay. And unless there's anyone else, we can move on. But let me just make a general statement, not just for your sake, Mr. Stankiewicz, but just because there's a recommendation on an audit, that is not necessarily a negative issue. Is that correct? I mean, it could be, but sometimes in any audit situation, if there's human error, slight human error, something like that, it doesn't necessarily represent that there's something really mistaken
Meaning like there's not -- there could not be -- errors occur.
Correct.
It could be an isolated case. It could be one out of 10,000 transactions. Or there could be a systematic problem, condition within. Example would be if the payroll person entered everyone's base pay wrong from the beginning of the year. However, there is also an external control that the staff would complain. So, yeah, I mean.
But what I'm saying is it's a recommendation to correct something is not necessarily a red flag if something is terrible.
Not really, but you know what? The Department of Ed has come down, and a long time ago, when we used to make these comments that we think you should look at this, we would get a nasty gram that says, any hint of negativism requires a recommendation, and then the board has to do -- and it comes four months after we issue the audit. So, auditors are hesitant to put any hint of negativism in the report because the Department of Ed comes down on you and says, hey, now you got to rewrite your report, and the board has to do a recommendation. So, those would come by way of verbal. And you know, in some of the places I work in, the municipalities, where they've had some of the same people there, we say, look, you need to fix this.
Okay.
A year goes by, and they don't. Okay. Now, it's in the report. Okay? So, yeah, it happens. Sometimes we recommend, but you're right. A lot of people interpret it as that somebody did something wrong.
Right.
And it's not always the case.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Shall we move on? Mr. Gorsky, who's next?
The next firm is --
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The firm of Jump Perry, and we have Mr. Jump here representing the firm. He's the founding partner.
I'm sorry.
Jump Perry, and this is Mr. Jump, the founding partner.
Mr. Jump, how are you? Thank you for coming. Okay. You might need to be closer to the mic.
That better?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you for having me. My name is Don Jump, as Mike said. I'm a partner in Jump Perry and Company. So, I'll try to be brief with my comments because it seems like you have a lot of questions, so I'll just answer the questions. But we are -- our primary facilities are located in Tom's River. We also have an office in Manahawken. We currently are auditing 14 Board of Eds. We have a total of 25 members in our firm. 10 of those are really dedicated to Board of Eds between the months of May through, I'll say, through October, although we're normally done part of that period of time. In order to answer some of your questions that were specifically asked, I think I'll just very quickly summarize our audit process for you and then build the answers into that. So, communication is the key to an effective audit, and communication is important all the way through the audit. So, the first thing we would do if we were appointed would be to have -- schedule a planning meeting with management to talk about the timeline, the deliverables, what would be required from the Board of Ed, staff members, and how we would meet those objectives. Once that was established, one of the very first things we would do would be a complete evaluation of your internal control. And the reason for that is twofold. One, to determine if we can rely on that internal control and perhaps reducing sample size of substantive work or not. And the other, to determine if we see any apparent weaknesses in internal control, which we would then be required to report to the board if we had those weaknesses. After doing that, the next order of business would generally be to do the compliance work. And the compliance work is compliance with governmental auditing standards, single audit compliance, and last but not least, compliance with the New Jersey Department of Education. So, that compliance work would be done. And then the last thing we would do would be to really work on the supporting documentation and review of transactions, annual look reviews, et cetera, that we'd have to do to support the actual numbers, the financial statement numbers. Once that's completed, the last phase would be to prepare a draft of the financials and the reports and present those, that draft, to management for their review. And then the very last thing would be to make a presentation to this board and/or the Finance Committee, depending on what your requirements are. So, one of the questions you asked, which I think I already answered, was that we handled 14 Board of Eds. You asked if we could get the report completely done prior to December 5th. Well, yes. I mean, we've never been late on a report, and we've been doing this for over 30 years in terms of, specifically to Board of Eds. Usually, we're done by, as I said, no later than October. Another question that was asked was, would we have to get anything from a predecessor auditor, any review of their work papers, their records, anything of that nature, in order to do a complete and full answer? Audit, excuse me. Audit, excuse me. The short answer is no. The only thing we're required to do by auditing standards with a predecessor auditor is to, is to communicate with them four areas. So the first question we would ask is, were there any disagreements with management over accounting principles? Were there any disagreements with management over auditing procedures performed? Then the last two things would be, were there any incidences of fraud? And were there any incidences of illegal acts? Those are the four things we're required to ask by our professional standards. Believe it or not, the predecessor auditor is not required to respond.
Yeah.
Which seems kind of strange, but usually it is, they do respond. And we do that typically in just a letter. We send a letter to the auditor. We, we ask those questions and 99 times out of 100, we get an answer back that says, "Nope, there were no incident, there were no disagreements, et cetera, et cetera." And I don't anticipate any, any problem there. But I want to make it clear that we would, this would not hold up our audit process in any way. And we have no, no need to review their work or their records or anything of that nature. Another question was, can we do your audit first? Okay, well, we could complete your audit first, depending on your ability to close your records and give us the information. This year, we can't start your audit first because we start our audits in May. We believe that evaluation of internal controls, compliance work, can all be done in May and June. We don't have to wait for your fiscal year end to close. Then we do that third phase of the audit, which is actually crunching the numbers as soon as you close your books. So now, if we are appointed and we, we also audit you next year, next year we can start you first. But, but we could certainly finish you first, assuming that you, you provide us with the information. I think those were the, I think those were all of the questions that you asked. So I'd, I'd like to thank you for having me here. And then I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Tofano?
How you doing, sir?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Stankowitz just told us that in his firm, he finds it very important to have a fresh set of eyes on his, you know, for his firm to rotate and have a fresh set of eyes on the numbers. What's your stance on having a fresh set of eyes look at numbers?
Well, he, he's, his point is, if you get too familiar with the people you're dealing with and the way they do things, you can get, we're supposed to be skeptics, right? As auditors. We're supposed to be Harry Truman. We're all from Missouri. So you do have to mix it up like that. And we do, we also do that. So we don't want the same staff member dealing with the same person in charge of payroll from year to year. Because we want somebody else asking the questions. Because maybe they get, maybe they like each other, which is okay. It's human, right? But you just don't want to get that comfortable. So yes, that's, that's a practice we do perform. We have two audit managers that specifically work on school boards. So we would rotate them. We have two partners, actually, I'm the technical review partner, which in, in our firm means, I focus on quality control. That all, all the work that was done was done in accordance with appropriate standards. We, we have a whole peer review process in the accounting profession. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but that's very, very important. My partner Kathy, who unfortunately is on vacation this evening, she's, she's primarily the engagement partner. We do switch off the managers. We have three seniors. We do switch off the seniors. And then we have younger staff. So our managers and, and seniors are very experienced. They each, my managers each have 15, 12 to 15 years of experience. Our seniors have eight to 10 years of experience. And then our staff are less experienced, of course.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, Mr. Rutske.
Hello, Mr. Jump. So my question is back to the idea of a clean audit, no material findings. So let's say you're doing, in certain schools, over and over, year after year, and you're not finding any material findings. It's clean. Are you comfortable with that? Or you're, again, digging a little deeper? You're trying, are you trying to find something to?
So the worst thing we could do is, so findings can be separated into a couple of different things. So findings can be related to either internal control over financial reporting, basically. Or it can be on compliance issues. Again, compliance with governmental compliance standards or the Department of Education compliance standards. So those are very specific findings. And even in, in our auditor's reports, if you read them, we define what is a finding? What is a deficiency in internal control? What is a material weakness? What is a significant deficiency? And so there's different levels. So those we're required to report on. And if we miss one of those, that's really on us. That's, that's a bad thing to happen. So the last thing, an auditor, an auditor's nightmare is to give a clean opinion on everything and then have something blow up. So believe me, we are looking very hard for that. And in the compliance area, it's, it's, it's even more black and white. You're either complying with the requirements or you're not. So if we have them, we have findings. Now, outside of the finding world, there are such things as recommendations for improvement. They're not really findings. They're not really deficiencies. We cover that in something that is generally referred to as a governance letter, which is at the end of our audit. So we give you a letter and we talk about the different, five or six different areas that we've, we've done in an audit. And there, if we say, gee, we think you, we think you could do something more efficiently or more effectively, it's not a finding, it's a recommendation. And we put that in that, in that area. But if I, the fact that I, you know, a Board of Ed was doing a great job, if, if you have great people doing a great job, I'm not, I'm not worried about that. But I am worried that I might miss something. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Ms. Bierman.
Hi.
Hi.
The 14 districts that you're currently engaged with, can you color a little of the longevity of the districts and whether you see a pattern of those districts, you know, sticking with the same firm for extended periods of time? Or if they've come and gone back to you?
Yes, it, it varies. We have, we do have some districts that we've had many, many years. You know, 15, 20 years. We have other districts that on a regular basis, just every two years, three years, four years, five years, go out for, for proposals. Sometimes we're reappointed, sometimes we're not. Sometimes they just decide they're going to change auditors just for the practice of changing auditors. So it varies quite a bit.
Thank you. Mr. Polari?
Madam President. Good evening, sir. Thank you very much for coming to our district and presenting your qualifications. I have a couple of very quick questions. If appointed to audit for Monroe Township School District, who would lead those efforts?
My partner Kathy Perry would be the engagement partner. Again, she, unfortunately, she's on vacation this week. That's, that's why she couldn't be here.
Fortunately for her.
Fortunately for her, yes.
Sorry.
Unfortunately for us. I would like to talk to the person who's actually going to do the audit, but I understand the circumstances. The second question is, there are 14 districts that you've been auditing over years. There's only one of them that's in 165 million category. And we are not that far behind. The rest of them are relatively small, maybe 30%, 40% of that. Do you find auditing larger school districts with larger budgets to be more challenging than the other ones? I think the answer is yes. But how do you find this new challenge to be taking, you know, you're going to be taking this on? Given that you're not auditing anything? Let me just finish. I'm almost done, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Just want to make sure that you're comfortable and you have the resources to do a larger school district like Monroe Township.
Yes, we are comfortable. We do have the resources to do a large school district. We also do other governmental audits that are not school districts, that are much larger. Truthfully, a lot of the audit work that's done is kind of irrelevant, the size of the school district, in terms of the, you know, the size, the financial size of the school district. It does present some additional work. There's no question about it, some additional work. But no, I'm, I'm very comfortable that we could do, we could do the school district.
The last question is that, were you asked to come in second or did you choose to come in second?
I, I was not given any, I was told to be here at 6:00.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jump, I'm going to ask you the same questions about, can you want to explain about an audit plan?
Yeah, I believe that our proposal has an audit plan in it.
So you don't see that as proprietary or anything like that?
No, no. It's a, it's a process that we do. And I know it, I know it has, it's, it's in there, the whole, the whole process.
And your sampling, I asked the question about sampling. How would you?
Well, the sampling, as, as Jerry said, is very true. We all follow the same standards. There's guidelines for sampling. It, it's a matter of assessing the risk of what you're sampling, the size of what you're sampling, what relative materiality of what you're sampling. And, and based on all of that, you, you come up with a range of sample sizes. And we all follow those sizes. There's some subjectivity involved in that, but most of it is, is just putting in, putting in the information and coming up with the sample size. And, and again, there are some specified sample requirements that you had in your proposal as well.
Okay. And forgive me, since I am not an auditor or an accountant, so, but to ask the same question, you also do an audit based on like a risk, a risk assessment?
Oh, yes, well, it's required.
It is required, okay.
It's an absolute requirement, a risk assessment.
All right, I think I'm, okay. Is there anyone else? Would you like to say anything?
No, just, just thank you for inviting us. And if we're appointed, we'll, we'll start as soon as you're ready.
Okay. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you.
I think we're on schedule. And this is our next.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
The, the final firm of the evening is the firm of HFA, Holman, Frenia, Allison. And I believe Mr. Robert Allison is here to introduce the firm. There's a brief PowerPoint presentation. He understands the time limitations here. So we're sure that it's just going to be a brief visual aid. The other firm for the record was PKF, and they withdrew from consideration.
Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Bob Allison, and this will be your audit team. I heard that question earlier. I'm the engagement partner, my colleague partner, Jerry Conady, and manager on the job. Here's government auditors. Thank you for having us here today. I'm going to let Jerry go through our PowerPoint, which I think will answer a lot of questions, which I already heard. And then we will follow that up.
Thank you very much. As Bob said, Jerry Conady, I'm a partner with the firm. We, we focus, this team here focuses exclusively on governmental auditing. Second half of the year, Kim Kelly and myself exclusively on school districts in New Jersey. So we're very well versed. We have approximately 30 school district clients across the state, mostly in, here in Middlesex, Monmouth, Ocean Counties is really kind of where most of our audit base is located. We have five partners at our firm. Of those five partners, three of which work almost exclusively on governmental clients. We have about 50 professionals and, and over 60 employees overall across the firm. What do you get with HFA? We'll, we'll talk a little bit more about it, but really, you get large firm knowledge with a local firm feel. We are, and I'll, I'll talk more about BDO Alliance, but we are members of what's referred to as the BDO Alliance. BDO is the fifth largest accounting firm in the world. And, and we are a member of that alliance group, which gives us access to all the same knowledge and resources that, that the BDO firm as a whole has. We have offices located in Red Bank and Lakewood Township. But, but we're involved right here in the community and we're a local firm. You mentioned the audit team. Kim Kelly will kind of oversee the audit as a whole. Kim is a senior manager at the firm. So we will have an, an audit team of a senior and at least one, maybe two staff accountants that will be onsite for, for most of the audit. Kim will kind of rotate one or two days a week or so. She'll be onsite. Bob Allison, as the engagement partner, will be kind of the main contact for you guys at the board level especially. And then myself as well. Again, having so many partners that are all well versed in governmental and school districts, there's never a time that you can't get ahold of any one of us for, for whatever reason or question that you may have. We pretty much never take vacations. And when we do, our phones are with us and our office phones forward to our cell phones. So we're always accessible. And, and like I said, if we're not, you've got plenty of backups that can, that can answer anything. With our personnel, we have a wide range of certifications, especially from the AICPA, Internal Control Certified through COSA, which has been very helpful in performing a lot of our audit procedures, what internal control specifically should look like. We also have single audit, which is a whole, whole nother level of, of audit technique that's required, certifications in that, as well as what's been a hot button topic recently, cybersecurity. So we've had professionals that are cybersecurity certified with the AICPA for a number of years now. And then we also have other non-AICPA certifications as well. Myself specifically, I am a certified fraud examiner. We have other people at the firm that are certified valuation analysts and, and just about any three-letter acronym that you can come up with in the accounting and consulting field, we probably have somebody that has one. I talked about the BDO Alliance before. There's about 300 alliance member firms across the nation. This was a tremendous resource, not just for us, but for our clients, especially last year in the midst of COVID. Not only did the BDO Alliance make their resources available to us as the accounting firm, we were able to then also extend all of that information out to all of our clients. So they had webinars and classes and emails that they were doing just about every single day. There were updates as to what was going on. So not only could we sit in and take those and, and learn directly from, you know, a, the fifth largest accounting firm in, in the nation, but our clients can sit in and get real-time information as well. So this was a tremendous asset. And then they also have a business resource network, which is a lot of other businesses. So if you were to kind of say, "Hey, we're looking for different accounting, for, different firms that maybe can, we want to outsource our payroll." There's any number of payroll firms that are there that you have access to that, that generally give preferential pricing to clients of member alliance firms. So it's just another resource that's available to you guys as a school district. Audit timeline. Should the board make a decision and appoint us tonight? We have a team that's ready to start in about 10 days or so. We can start if you guys are ready. We have no problems meeting the December 5th deadline. The only holdup that we would ever foresee is really from the state of New Jersey, which they've held up every New Jersey school district for the past number of years. But outside of that, we're, we're fully ready to go. We also took a lot of the lessons that we learned from COVID and spun them forward into a lot of our ongoing audit procedures and processes. We try to do as much remote work as possible, just to limit our, our time onsite, just for exposure to your staff. And, you know, I like to joke that I have a wife that is an accountant for a company. And I get to hear directly how the, how she feels about the auditors when she comes home. So, you know, our goal is kind of trying to be as, 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 not as big of a problem as, as we need to be. Let's go in and do all the auditing that we need to do, but being respectful and trying not to disrupt everybody's world for, for a two or three week period. Just over the past six months or so, just about all of our audits have been done where we're in the office for first couple of days a week and just doing a lot of our sampling, picking a lot of our samples, doing a lot of our planning, reassessing our audit plan. So if it's the second week, generally Monday or Tuesday, we're kind of looking back to see, okay, did something come up while we were onsite that we maybe want to reassess our plan and, and look in areas that maybe we didn't consider before? So that's, that's most of the audit timeline there. We do implement a risk-based audit approach. So our first step of that would be getting the financial statements of the district, making sure that they're in, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Once that's there, we then kind of start to take a look at the processes, what processes are in place, what controls are in place, and we start to have interviews. We also ask for involvement from the Board of Education or the Finance Committee. We will make a couple of calls to different board members at complete random, just to hear what maybe concerns that you may have had. And we go all the way down. We do that not just of board members, but we do it of varying levels of management. We do it from employees, just trying to get a feel from all areas of the school district. And we really try and make sure that we get outside the business office as well. So then fast forward, beginning balances. Being a first-year audit client, we're required to perform testing and procedures on your beginning balances. We expect that we can perform pretty much all of those procedures, just from documents that are here at the district. We are required to reach out to the prior-year auditor, just to ask if there are any conflicts or, or issues or things like that. But outside of that, as long as the district has all the, the resources and the schedule supporting the numbers in last year's audit, we should, have. the numbers in last year's audit, we have no need to really be reaching out to the prior-year accountant, auditor. We'll perform all of our testing, and then the last phase of that is wrap-up reporting and meeting with you guys to go over what we discovered, what we saw, things like that. So, what sets us apart? A lot of governmental auditing firms kind of look at things as a, they either only do governmental auditing and don't do any kind of tax or advisory work or anything of that nature, or a lot of them are maybe tax firms that in the second half of the year, when they're not really doing taxes, they fast-forward to school districts or other governmental entities that are June 30th year-ends. As I mentioned before, we're exclusively governmental, especially the second half of the year. As I said, Kim and I are 100% school district auditors. But we also have a tax practice, so if you call us up and say, you know, hey, we've got this question over the taxability of this item or that, or have a question over this payroll item, we've got tax experts that can look into those questions. We also have, what's really been kind of taking off, is an advisory team. So, things that are completely removed from the audit process, a lot of times, they're kind of one-off type engagements. We've had issues where maybe we were looking at 1099 compliance, IRS comes through and has questions over the, whether 1099s were handled correctly. We've got some that we're doing, our advisory team is doing regionalization and consolidation studies. You know, we really run the gamut of a lot of our advising, advisory work for our clients. But it really allows us to be able to do a lot of additional consulting work and assistance by a team that's completely independent of the audit team. So, you have kind of a wall built between the two, so that we're not trying to audit our own work. We don't charge for any phone calls, emails, things like that throughout the year. We really like to make sure that we're consultants and helping you guys in getting the answers that you need, as opposed to kind of taking a hands-off approach and not answering those emails or charging you for those emails, and then coming in at the end of the year and punishing you if you did it wrong. We want to help you get the answers and make sure it's done right upfront, as opposed to kind of being the, people coming in and saying, I got you. And then we have our, you know, our HFA network. We're very big on charitable giving, especially with our employees. We have, our employees all have a minimum of 16 hours of volunteer efforts that they are allowed to take just throughout the year as they see fit, as well as just a lot of community organization projects. We just finished one, 63 pairs of shoes for a local school shoe drive that they had done. So, I think they were pretty much all from one employee, so she had a lot of shoes to clean out. But, you know, we're very big on helping our clients and giving back wherever we can. Happy to answer any questions. I think we answered a lot of the questions and some of the advanced questions, but happy to answer any others you guys may have.
I'll let Karen start. Karen Bierman?
Yeah. So, the political contribution disclosure form, so with your proposal, there's a significant number of entries there. The other two candidates didn't have any. Just looking for some color on whether you see that as, you know, standard and common, or if there's, you know, any explanation to explain the contributions.
Yep. So, we, you know, we have not made any contributions to anybody that is up here, any decision-makers or anything of that nature. So, that's first and foremost. We don't engage in that. But, so, I don't think those, any political contributions have any impact on the board's decision as far as our independence to you guys and our ability to perform proper audit, so.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes, the last two firms we interviewed showed significant importance in having a fresh set of eyes. When you have the same employee doing the same thing over and over again, they tend to lax in their ability to see what needs to be seen. How do you guys feel about a fresh set of eyes?
So, we, as a firm, are very big on auditor rotation. So, we do it at a number of different fronts, and we kind of staggered our rotation in, I guess I'll say, really just for the mindset of, sometimes just having that institutional knowledge helps to be a little bit more efficient with doing the audit. So, a lot of times, what we'll do is maybe Bob will cycle off as the engagement partner, and maybe Matt Holman from our firm will cycle on as the engagement partner instead, and we'll get a fresh set of eyes that year, whereas Kim will stay on as the manager. And then maybe the next year after that, Kim cycles off and we bring on a new manager. So, within a couple of year time span, you have a brand-new team that's not necessarily colored by what was done three years ago.
Right. We have about three.
Could you use the microphone, sir, so the public can hear?
Excuse me. We have about three full sets of audit teams, so you're seeing one here. So, we have three others, and we do rotate.
We have six teams that are specifically devoted to this.
Six full teams, okay. Three partners, though.
So, in short, your answer is it's very important to have a fresh set of eyes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Did you want to ask a question, Mr. Gory?
Madam President, thank you very much for being here this evening. Really appreciate your time, especially three of you coming here. Very quickly, you have approximately 35 school districts you appear to be working on. Could you give us an order of magnitude of what their budgets are, how big and how small they are, so that I get an idea?
We have, we have some, our smallest client, I think, is about a $2 million budget, and our largest is over $250 million. We have a number of them that are in that area.
Okay. Would you think that the first year, if you're appointed for this audit services, your first year being fresh would have a little bit more extra work to get to know and everything else in the year number two, year number three, and so forth? The level of effort is going to be a little bit more streamlined, if you will.
Absolutely.
The level of effort would be low, right? It's a leading question, unfortunately, because in your proposal, you have the first year to be at a certain number, I don't want to disclose it, and the second year to be slightly more than the first, and the third is more than the other one. So, could you just explain to me how that arrived at?
Yeah, we are, we have always taken the stance as a firm that we're not as interested in one-year engagements, especially with audits, just because of all the effort that goes into doing the first year of audit. So, that's why we generally look for long-term relationships with clients. So, that's why the first year of an audit, we've always been affirmed that we're willing to eat those additional costs ourselves, to make sure that we're continuing a long-term relationship with them.
You raised another question in my head. So, would you be looking for the school district to make a certain years of commitment?
Nope.
So, after first year, if the board decides not to renew your contract for next year, okay with that?
That's certainly their prerogative, you know, and we have had instances with that where a client does, you know, we have gotten burned in instances like that, where we've maybe been appointed to a client, we've put in all that extra time, and for whatever reason, you know, they decided to go a different direction the next year, and, you know, obviously not something we'd prefer to see, but, you know, we also try not to get jaded from the couple instances that that's happened, so.
I fully understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutske?
Hi, folks. Thanks very much for being here. So, my question's with regards to a clean audit or no material findings, what have you. So, let's say we have had a clean audit for the last three-plus years. Do you feel any sense of pressure coming in to find something, to list different than the clean audits we had in the past?
Not, not any pressure to do so. I mean, our independence and our integrity in doing it is, if it's an issue, it's an issue. It doesn't matter whether you're a first-year client, whether you're a fifth-year client, a 10th-year client, if it's an issue, it needs to be addressed, it needs to be fixed. So, not that we find any necessarily pressure to do so. It does make your audit a little more risky for us, because we don't have the institutional knowledge. We don't necessarily know. So, we're going to be looking in a lot of places that maybe another auditor that was here for five years and never had a rotation of their team or anything like that, you know, maybe they grew a little more complacent. You guys are brand-new to us, so until we know further, everything for us is high-risk. So, we're going to look a lot heavier than maybe somebody that's, where you've had a partner, a quality control partner and a manager that's been the same for five or 10 years, so.
And so, assuming that we've been clean, and you guys, you folks come through and you deem us a clean audit, no material findings, you're comfortable with that? You're comfortable with that continuation? That doesn't pose a problem?
If there's no, I mean, yes, we're not, we're not looking, we never go into a client looking to say, we need to, we need to get them, you know, we need to find something and make something up to get them.
Right.
If there's something there, we're going to bring it to attention, we're going to report on it, but we're not going to just go and create something just for the sake of saying, you know, hey, you've had a clean audit.
I'll just jump in.
Thank you.
We're very confident in our audit procedures, our risk assessment, our interview process. So, whether, again, as Jerry said, whether you're a first-year client or a 10th-year client, we're very confident in the thoroughness of what we do, and the results are the results. So, it's like being an umpire. So, strike, it's a ball, and we call it, and we're very transparent. You know, just so you know, we work for the board, obviously, so we don't work for the administration. We work for the board. However, we work with the administration in order to make the district better as time goes on.
Great, thank you very much.
Anyone else before I ask my question? Okay. I asked the other gentleman that were here. Your audit plan, is that something that you would let us know about? And is there any reason to keep it personal or proprietary?
Nope.
No?
It's in our proposal. It was on one of the slides that was in there as far as our approach to doing our audits, so, nope, it's not.
It's in there.
It's out there.
Yeah, no, I know, I just wanted to, since I asked everyone, I wanted to let the public know.
Yep, absolutely.
And in terms of sampling, how would you sample, like a district such as ours? We have $130 million budget. We have about 100, and if I, correct me if I'm wrong, $110 million debt structure, and we have 7,005 students now and 1,200 employees.
Yep. So, we, so, as we talked about before, we go based on a risk-based approach. So, the riskier the area, the heavier that we're going to test. If it's something that, after looking at the controls, after doing some preliminary walkthroughs of the controls that are in place, we see that it's maybe not as risky of an area, we may sample a little less there, so that we can focus more so on the higher-risk areas. But we utilize a number of different softwares as well that help us with that. So, we use random number generators and things like that, so that our samples are completely random. They're not biased by our own opinion. They're not biased by, you know, oh, this one looks like a fun one to pick, I'm going to select this one. They're, our samples are completely random. And then we also do what we refer to as ISI testing, or individually significant items. So, we will look at the large ones, because again, we're doing a financial statement audit, so we do want to look at the material items. So, we will look absolutely at those material items, and then we'll use our random number generators to select additional samples from there, just being cognizant that, you know, not all errors or not all mistakes are on the large items, sometimes they're on the smaller ones.
And the random sample, is it different sizes for different-size schools? I'd like to hear this young lady speak.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Those two chatty ones there. But, yeah, so, we test risk-based approach based on each individual fund. So, you have a different sample for your general fund, your special revenue fund, and even all your enterprise funds that the district has. So, each fund gets taken into account, the materiality for the fund, the planning materiality, then our software spits out a sample number based on that. So, each fund gets looked at on a concentrated level. Without having your numbers input in the software, I can't necessarily say, but a very large district, I mean, some of these sample sizes that we're looking up is upwards of 60 to 70 per fund, like if you were looking at an expenditure sample. But there is also other methods that we use for testing beyond just purchase orders or expense samplings as well.
Okay.
We also will expand our testing if we find some errors or some things that concern. So, if our initial sample was, throughout there, 100, and we find a certain number of variances, we will expand that sample and see if that was something, which was an anomaly, or if it was more pervasive.
You weren't here when I first mentioned that what we're probably going to do is, a thank you for your time, you don't, you won't have to stay here. In the later part of our agenda, we have a business administrators section, and that's usually the last section, and we'll have a deliberation, and then probably choose one of the orders, and we can let you know tomorrow, if that's okay with you? Are you good with that?
Thank you.
And Jerry said, we're going to sort of be for Monday.
Good.
So, we've already, I don't know what it was.
Use your mic, I'm sorry.
Can we be, or can you be, our first audit? Again, we have a number of teams. We probably have a couple of audits going already, but as soon as you make a decision, we clear the deck so that a week from Monday, we're able to come in.
And you expect that you would, with everything, of course, normal, you expect to finish by December?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Absolutely, before that.
Okay.
And what happens, and I'll just, you know, I'll just go in about what the state's been doing, right? So, the state has held up things like pension numbers and OPEB numbers, but we will have the audit done. We will have a draft. We will be able to come in here and discuss with you with the Finance Committee way before, and of the information that you're interested in. Most clients are not interested that the actuary says we owe $10 million in pension payments. They care more about the operations. So, we'll have that to you very, you know, very soon, as soon as we're done. And if the state waits until February to give us the last number, and that's when the final report has to go out, you will have known way before that as to where you stand as a district.
Thank you so very much for your time. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it okay with the board will deliberate that in the business administrator section of the agenda? Okay? Give people time to sort of digest and think about what we've heard. We'll move on. Okay. Well, how are you, Mr. Gagliardi?
Madam President, how are you?
For the members of the public who might be their first time here, Mr. Gagliardi is our counsel or attorney, and we have invited him to the meetings on a regular basis, so we are glad to have him. Thank you, sir. I'm wondering if there's an ability to move, we should have thought of this sooner, I apologize. You know what, Mr. Gagliardi, would you mind sitting on this side this time? Because there's a mic, all of your own.
Wow.
How's that?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
With that seat does come some added pressure. With great power comes great responsibility, I think is the quote.
Okay. So, we will move then to the next section, which is, I'm sorry, we did that, and approval of the minutes. Mr., oh, before we start, I do want to make somewhat of a statement. Mr. Gorski, you are, you are our board secretary, and you also are a business administrator. I would ask that when the time comes for our business administrator report, if, you know, certainly, we will field questions from the board, and we're happy when you, you know, give us answers and give us the information that we asked for. However, when we are calling the roll, it is in your capacity as the board secretary, and I would ask, sir, that you call the roll, give us the final numbers, and please do not engage the board members who are elected officials in their capacity to vote. They have a right to do that, and we would like to just have them vote according to the roll call. And we don't want any misrepresentation of any facts that might occur during the roll call, so I just would appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam President, I'm not sure if I understood what you're saying. Could you please repeat that again?
Yes, Mr. Gorski is the board secretary, and during roll call, I would like him to just call the roll without engaging a member of the board, whether they should be voting or not on something. I don't think in his capacity as board secretary that that question should be asked. Okay? Thank you. Please go to the.
Something seems premeditated here, especially with the claps.
I beg your pardon?
I'm still not understanding, because we have the roll call on every item ever since I've been on the board.
Would you like me to elaborate? I was hoping not to, sir, but I will.
You're setting a new precedent, all of a sudden.
No, it's not a precedent. In past, in last month's board meeting, a board member who was voting on a matter was challenged about their vote, and that is not in the capacity of the board secretary.
Okay, not knowing what you're saying.
That's all I wanted to say, was trying to be as courteous as possible. Okay, thank you. May we have the approval of the minutes, please. The special Public Board of Education meeting of June 14th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Tofano, motion, second, Ms. Bierman. Okay, Mr. Gorski, please call the roll.
We generally don't have a roll call on this. I'll be happy to take a roll call if you wish, but this is generally a show of hands and those in favor. and those in favor and those abstain and recuse.
Okay, that's fine. Let me do that. Any, well, all, anyone approving, just raise your hand. Anyone disapproving? Any recusals? Did I, wait, did I see someone disapprove? No? Okay. No recusals or abstentions? Any corrections or additions? No, I guess we move that down. Okay? Closed session meeting, June 14th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Tofano? Anyone else? Second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Nikotinsky, second it. And let me start then with recusals or abstentions? Approve, all in favor?
I have a question before we get to a vote. I'd like to, I'd like to see a correction to the minutes.
Of the closed session minutes?
Of the closed session minutes, I'd like to see the word, the board, I'd like to see the word conducted, the superintendent evaluation to reviewed, because we did not conduct the superintendent's evaluation at that meeting. We just reviewed it as board. The superintendent was not there. And this, to me, as I read it, sounds like we conducted the evaluation and we did not do that.
It was a review of the evaluation.
It was a review of her evaluation amongst the board members in closed session.
Okay, can we change that word, please?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be noted in the final version of the minutes we're changing to reviewed.
To reviewed. The board members' evaluations.
Instead of commenced, to reviewed.
No, instead of conducted.
Instead of conducted to reviewed. Thank you, sir.
It wasn't conducted. Okay. Everybody, anyone else? Additions? Corrections? Okay, so let's have that approved. How many approve? Okay. Any disapprove or recuse or anything else? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Gorski, shall we move on?
Yes.
The public board meeting, Board of Education meeting, June 16th, 2021. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Let's have the motion and, yes, you've motioned for Mr. Tofano, you're seconding?
No.
No? You're not, okay. No, you can, you can second it? If you have a discussion, then please go ahead.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to table the minutes from the June 16th, 2021 public meeting. I have multiple corrections that I would like to send in for consideration and I feel that it's too many to go through right now.
Okay, so once we have a table, then we have to vote on whether to table it or not. So now we do have to have a roll call, correct, Mr.?
Yes, this is a motion to table, it needs a second.
Second.
Ms. Belko, second.
Okay, we'll have a roll call.
And this is just for the public board of education meeting, June 16th, 21, correct?
I believe Ms. Kirby would like to make additions and corrections to that.
Yes.
Very well. Motion to table, Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Polari.
I abstain, I don't know why you ordered tabling, so I would abstain.
Mr. Rosky.
I'll agree to it. What I'd like to have is the changes that are recommended, I'd like to come, obviously, to the board, like sort of highlighted.
Right.
What's coming out, what's going in.
Correct.
So yes.
If anyone cares to make, you know, and going forward, we'll try to do this. If anyone cares to make changes, if they can't be done prior to this meeting where we get an agreement to change, then what we should do probably is send it to all the board members so they could read it and then to our board secretary. And we should know what, yeah. Oh, no, let's keep everybody in the loop. We still have to.
Mr. Rosky's recorded as a yes, thank you. Ms. Segal.
Yes.
Ms. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Motion to table passes.
Okay, so we will be reviewing that, those minutes next week with the changes and we'll get those changes prior to, in our packages, so everybody can read them also. Okay?
Michelle, should I send my corrections to you or to the entire board?
I think you should send them to the entire board and to Dr. Alvik and Mr. Gorski.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, I actually sent corrections and I got no response.
Okay, well, we'll do it again.
You did get a response.
I didn't get corrected response from you.
The response was that any changes made to the minute would have to be brought up at the meeting today.
Okay.
That was the response. Correct, Mr. Gagliardi?
Correct. I think the process laid out by the board president is appropriate. People circulate their proposed changes and the board can decide at the meeting what accurately reflects what had transpired at the previous meeting where everyone was present and so the minutes should reflect that.
If like in the case of Ms. Belko, that there was one or two words that we're being able to, we can do that at the board meeting active. Okay? Everybody in agreement? We got that? Okay, great.
And certainly, Madam President, there's a videotape available if anybody wants to go back and refresh their memory of what should be and the minutes that shouldn't be.
Right, that's true. I've always been of the opinion that while we have the video that is available, if we approve board minutes, those are the official approval and that's where, you know, if we ever had to rely on something, I believe we probably should be considering, I don't know if there's a way to consider the video unofficial as well, but once you approve the minutes and that becomes the official record, and if those aren't accurate, that's where, that's where I think issues arise in the future. And we can talk about that maybe in policy and see if that could be changed. Because I know a lot of the public would like to see verbatim minutes sometimes. Okay. Next, closed session meeting, June 16th, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Karen Bierman, Mr. Tofano. I think it was the opposite, we're going for Karen tonight.
That's fine.
Anyone like to make any additions or corrections? Okay, any abstentions or recusals? May I have approvals? How many approve? Anyone disapproving? Okay. Mr. Gorski, I believe that has passed, yes. Okay. I don't see our dear student board members here tonight. They must be on vacation, summer vacation, well deserved. So we'll move on to the presentation. I did see our New Jersey School Boards representative, Ms. Friedman. She'll be coming to the podium and letting us know what she'll be talking about. And Dr. Alvik, would you like to introduce her while she's coming up?
So this evening, we have Mrs. Mary Ann Friedman here with us to share the final report for the strategic action plan process that we had engaged in almost two years ago now. And what you will, so she will kind of go over the process and the final piece. The final report, including the district action plans, are available on our district website.
Welcome, Ms. Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. This is a very big report.
Oh, goodness.
But our presentation is going to be short.
Okay.
Too short.
I think Dr. Alvik already said that, but I'll repeat it. The strategic plan is already on the district website for our public to take a look at. And you can listen along and then take a look at that if you have any other questions. Oh, thank you. Mr. Gorski? Thank you.
I just need extras.
Yes.
Closed sessions moving to the principal's conference room, there's an air conditioning problem where it was previously scheduled.
Okay, when the time comes, we'll just announce that, thanks. Ms. Friedman, are you ready?
I am, okay.
We are ready for you as well.
Good evening, everybody. It's so good to see you all. This has been a process, as you know, and we started this back in January of 2020. And the reason that there are three names up there, two names other than my own, is because while I was at all three meetings, Charlene Peterson, a field service representative, was there for the first meeting in January, and then Kathleen Helwell was there for the second one. And so the components of the strategic plan were, that the board agreed to and committed to, was a 3D process. The first meeting, which was on January, I'm trying to read it, January 14th, had 48 attendees. And that, at that meeting, Dr. Alvik gave a state of the schools report and then everybody was broken up into small groups and we identified, they identified, a top 10 strengths and challenges. And every, after every meeting, all of the outcomes were always provided to Dr. Alvik and to the board president and were posted on the website. So everything is up there. And then what you have in front of you as board members now is the completed plan, which includes the state of the schools report and also the action plans. So the next meeting was held on February 24th. There were 43 attendees at that meeting and we talked about vision and developed the visioning statements, visioning statements rather, and initiatives. And then the third meeting was supposed to take place on March 26th, I believe, or 23rd. And as you all know, on March 13th of 2020, the world hit the pause button. And so nothing really was able to happen. We talked about doing something virtually and it was felt that because everything was pretty much in a state of crisis across the state and across the country and the world, that we would wait. And so we did wait and we had a virtual meeting on April 6th. 36 attendees were present. We had board members there, we had past member, board members there, teachers, staff, and community members. And so at that meeting, we developed goal statements, you all developed, I wasn't part of that. We developed goal statements and objectives and then some strategies. And after that, the superintendent was able to take all of that information and again, all of those outcomes after each meeting were posted on your website and this is now posted on your website too, the actual final report that the board has received. And then the action plans were developed, they were submitted to me, and here we are tonight. So the process really was the three meetings with stakeholder groups. And again, we had parents, we had teachers, we had community members, we had board members present and past, administrators were there, there was the state of the schools presentation and the identification of strengths and challenges. The second meeting was to create a district vision and initiatives and from that, we identified goal areas that night and there were four goal areas. And then the third meeting, which was the virtual meeting, we still broke up into small groups virtually, there were breakout rooms. Everybody pretty much went into the rooms that they would like to be in for the goal area that they would like to work on and goal statements were developed and objectives and some strategies. And those were taken from the strengths and challenges and the visioning exercise. The action plans were then developed by the administrative team and tonight, we're delivering the final strategic plan. And this really is going to provide the framework for you as a board and as a district for the next four years. The action plans go through 2024 and they are quite extensive. So I think you'll be able to take a look at this and really read through it. I suggest that you really go through the plan to be able to see what's included in there and then at a future meeting, adopt the plan. Okay? And remember, the goal of strategic planning was a ground-up process, so everybody's thoughts and everybody's values and views were considered and then that plan is developed. That was the what part of the plan. And then the administration, Dr. Alvik and the administrative team have developed the action plans, which are the how, how they're going to get you from where you are now to the success of the program in 2024. This is really hard to see. It didn't look that difficult on my laptop. The participants, as I said, were board members, past and present, superintendent, business administrator, other assistant administrators, assistant superintendent, teachers, parents, and community members. They really volunteered their time, their talent, and their energy to the success of this plan. The mission statement is, "The Monroe Public Schools, in collaboration with the members of the community," which was this part of the strategic plan, was bringing those community members together, "shall ensure that all children receive an exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff in a safe and orderly environment." So the first goal area, and these are not in any particular priority order, but the first goal area was facilities and finance, "to demonstrate and address the current facility needs as well as the need for additional facilities to safely house our students for a comprehensive education." The second goal was educational excellence, "provide all students with access and opportunities to develop the necessary skills to become career and college-ready through inclusive and diverse learning opportunities with highly qualified and well-trained staff." The third area was health and wellness, "to provide resources and promote an environment that enhances and supports the health and wellness of students, staff, and families." So you've taken it a step further. Goal four is community engagement, which the Monroe Township School District strives to create strong partnerships with our diverse community through authentic communication and accessibility. So the action plans, which, I'm sorry, you can't see, but what's up there is the goal statement will be there, the objective will be there, the major accomplishments or major activities, who's responsible, what the timeframe is, what the resources are, and what the deadline is, and then how will we know that those things were actually achieved? And so all of that is at the back. As I said, this is a really, this is the first time I've delivered a 77-page strategic plan. So kudos to all of you for all of the hard work that you did. And I really would like to thank all of you for the opportunity to work with you all in a very different way than we typically do as field service reps when we come in and we provide training. This was really an opportunity to work with the board, past and present, and to work with your community members, your staff, your administrative staff, to really develop the strategic plan that will guide you over the next four years. And it really has, and truly has been my pleasure to work with you. So does anybody have any questions?
You have a lot of work to do.
Yes, you do.
In the next five.
And I can promise you that this will really transform your district even further. You're doing great work now as, you know, identified by the state of the schools report and the strengths that were identified by the groups that were here, but this is going to take you even further along and I'm very excited to see that happen, so.
So how often should we review this? Once every other month? I mean, should we, should we talk about it a little bit in committees every month? I mean, it's a big plan.
It is a big plan. And you can take this information and you can filter it into your committees, whatever's appropriate for whichever committee. So you can certainly do that and make those part of maybe your committee goals. Your annual district goals will fall from this now. They'll, everything will stem from your mission statement, your strategic plan, and drop down to everything else and ultimately gets down to the students because it goes from the administrators to the board goals, to district goals, to board goals, to administrative goals, to building goals, to teachers' goals, and filters down to students to improve student achievement. So we suggest at least once a year, so probably in June or Janu, or June or July of next year, you would have an update on the strategic planning process and on the goals and what's been achieved, just like you would, you would do your district goals more often than that. But they can, your district goals will very, very likely be a part of what's in here. So this will, they will flow from that. So at least once a year for the strategic plan, you should review it.
What do you think about talking about it again in December and then in June?
That's fine. If everybody is in agreement to that, it's really a board and administrative decision. So if you're all in agreement to that, the things that you're obviously going to look for, just like you would with your district goals, is, are the things that we said were going to be completed then by November 30th, if you're doing December of 2021, were those things able to be achieved? If they weren't, that may not be a problem. It may be because of something that was out of the administrator's control and the district's control. But you just need to know then, okay, if these weren't achieved, how come? And when do we expect that they'll be achieved? Or is it something that we just can't do any longer? And there has to be that flexibility also, because sometimes there will be things, and I don't know if I mentioned this to all of you way back when we first started talking about this, but years ago, there, before 2008 and before the accountability regulations came out, there were districts that had built up strategic plans. And remember, you're building up resources over the years to be able to accomplish these things. So everything can't be accomplished in year one, as much as we would like it to be. So they had plans in 2008 to hire a full-time marketing person and PR person. Well, the accountability regulations came out and said you can't do that any longer. So that was something that they couldn't do because statute and code changed and regulations changed. So there may be things like that that happen along the way and administration would let you know what those are. You would certainly know about them from New Jersey school boards also and would have to make, you know, adjustments then.
So we should review this and vote on its adoption next month? That would be.
You can adopt it at a future meeting. Next month would be great. Next month would be great. There's a lot here to read. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna kid you.
Is there a timeframe that we have to be conscious of? No?
No, I would say in the next month or so, though.
Okay.
Because you want your administrators to start working on the action plans, certainly. And the longer it takes to adopt it, you know, they may not feel comfortable really in act, implementing any of these things until the board's adopted it.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to, Mr. Polari?
Two quick questions. Thank you very much, Ms. Friedman, for being here today. Is this document something that we can share with public? And does the, question number one. Question number two is, does the public still have an opportunity to comment if, after, if it's going to be made public?
It's already been made public. It's on our district website already. This entire report is on the district website as of today.
Okay. No fault of yours, probably mine. My name is misspelled through, but I think it was the way I probably signed it, and I think there's quite a few misspelled names, because folks from different countries and not very typical last names, but.
I will say, I did the best I could with signatures, so.
Let me understand.
And if I saw something that I couldn't identify, I tried to get the person to.
The reason I'm asking about putting it on the website is that.
But I can make those changes.
At least on the webs, not change these, but on the website, at least, if we can correct those one way or the other, that'll be beneficial. I mean, people would know, know who's here and who's not. Thank you very much.
Sure, if you let, if you let me know, I can make those changes, and I can resend it to Dr. Alvik.
Does anybody else have their names misspelled? Just letting you know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Dr. Alvik, did you like to say anything in reference to this?
No, I think, I was excited that we were able to get this finally completed. It took a little while, but we were able to get it. I think we, the four goals and the objectives under each goal, I think are things that will definitely take this district to the next level. So, I think this is a good plan.
Mr. Gorski, would you like to comment?
No, it's a pleasure working with you again, Ms. Friedman. Thank you for your very professional help with the strategic plan.
Oh, thank you.
It's been a difficult year.
It's been a pleasure working with everybody, and it has been a really difficult year. And I really would like to thank you for all that you do for your children, the children in your district, your staff, your community members. It's been an unforgiving year and a half, and if anybody had told me on March 13th of 2020, we would still be in this process, I would have said, "You're absolutely crazy." But here we are. So, thank you for everything that you've done. I know that there were, you know, a lot of challenges at the very beginning, but most districts were able to really work through those and still provide a quality education and quality teaching for their students and their staff. So, thank you for everything that you guys do, because we appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank New Jersey School Boards and Mary Ann Friedman for the effort she makes to keep our district rolling. Thank you for your time. Okay. We'll have committee reports next. Anyone like to start? Would you like to start?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Beerman, and Finance, is that what you said? Finance Committee?
Finance, yes.
Okay, please.
Covering for Mr. Sheeran. And Mr. Gorski, any item that you want to inject more on, please let me know.
Will do.
All right, thank you. So, the Finance Committee met on Wednesday, July 14th. The first topic of discussion was the request for proposal for the auditing services. Mr. Gorski informed the committee that he received four responsive proposals by the deadline. He sent them to the board attorney, who indicated there were no material defects in any of the proposals. Mr. Gorski informed the committee that pursuant to Ms. Arminio's request, he scheduled the board interviews to start 6:00 PM at the next Board of Education meeting. Finance Chair asked Mr. Gorski for relevant questions for the board to consider. Mr. Gorski proposed about eight and offered to pose the questions to the four firms and provide the board with their written response. The next item was the 2122 lease purchase equipment financing bid results. Mr. Gorski updated the committee on the results of the 2122 lease purchase financing bid. Only one bid was received, and it had a very advantageous interest rate of .9164%. Attorneys from Carter and English said the bid had no material defects. The committee does recommend this for board approval. Next item is discussion of SRF, SFRA 2008 S2 affecting school aid and S-3617 and A-5721, the new bills going through the state. Mr. Gorski refreshed the committee's understanding of the current funding formula, known as the School Funding Reform Act of 2008, as suggested by S2. Mr. Gorski then updated the committee on two new bills, which could potentially affect school funding. The bills are S-3617 and A-5721. The committee appreciated the updates and will follow the progress of the legislation. Next item was the Middle Grades Career Awareness and Exploration Program Grant. Mr. Gorski, on behalf of Ms. McConnell, introduced a Middle School Grades Career Awareness and Exploration Program Grant. The district is eligible for $52,190 of funding to support student interest, community involvement opportunities with local businesses and colleges, counselor and teacher training, curriculum development, and more. The program will provide engaging and unique experiences for students to fully prepare them for college and career readiness as they transition to high school. Professional development will be integrated throughout the project period. The committee does recommend the grant application be approved. The next topic was iPad insurance discussion. Mr. Gorski introduced a letter to high school parents prepared by Dr. Higgins, which lowered the parents' contribution to the one-to-one initiative because of more advantageous terms negotiated by administration with Apple. The committee recommended minor changes to the letter, which Mr. Gorski incorporated. Do you want to give the specifics on that, or no?
Sort of appreciated, if necessary.
Just what the numbers were, so that the public understands what the advantages. I don't think the letter went out from Dr. Higgins to the high school yet.
No. It hasn't gone out. It usually goes out the beginning of August.
Right. Is it something we're holding till then, or no?
Sure.
It was exciting in the committee, so.
Yes.
Share it.
Yes. Just for everybody's benefit, the district now is in the third refresh of the Apple iPads since we initially introduced them to students and parents back when the school was open around 2011. And in the beginning, there were some hiccups. The money to provide for the initial investment in the iPads was included in the referendum to build the school, and Mr. Gorman's design was such that the technology purchase waited till the school was built, and we got the most cutting-edge technology deployed through the school. And a one-to-one initiative of a device that students can hold and take home certainly inspired a lot of interest in learning, more so than a standard textbook. But there were some hiccups in the beginning. There was some, there was a great number of broken units. There was a large district expense sending them back and getting them repaired, and the Apple iPad insurance was an additional fee to the school district. So, the traditional charges back in the beginning to parents was $85 each year that the device is handed out to students. And then, if the screen was cracked or if it was damaged and had to be sent back to Apple, there was a $75 charge to cover the insurance and the postage back and forth and that type of stuff. But over time, aggressive negotiations with Apple between the Technology Director, the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent, and myself has led to a reduction or complete elimination, I should say, of the insurance piece. It's now, it's been incorporated into the price of the unit, which has steadily dropped over time. We've also learned that because of the deterrent that students faced with the $75 charge to have it go back if it was broken, the district is seeing less machines broken. It was in the hundreds before, now it's significantly less per year. And all of the money collected by the school district is put into a separate one-to-one initiative reserve fund on the balance sheet, and by design, through policy, that money is then put forth when we do the refresh, and it reduces the amount that the year-one payment has to make. So, by reducing the fee now, instead of $85 each year to $85 one-time payment on the initial deployment of the iPads, the district will not be collecting about $408,000 in total in years two and three, which will mean that the $400,000 is now going to be raised through the tax levy and have to fit into the cap. So, it's a benefit certainly to students and parents. Just want to disclose that it will present a challenge with the many others we face when we put the budget together in future years. Anybody who is on free and reduced lunch is exempt from these charges and always has been. And new with the letter and the new procedure here is that if there are any substituted cables that are not of Apple quality, if there's anything missing or anything broken, there'll be a charge when the items are returned. Dr. Alvik, was there anything else that I missed?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, the big, the big difference is, instead of paying $85 each year, the parents are going to pay one fee of $85 each refresh. So, that $85 will get you approximately a three-year term with that same device. When those devices are collected and sold through auction and we refresh with new units, there'll be a new $85 charge. It's a $75 charge if the unit's, if the first time it's broken, there's no charge. The second time it's broken, there's no charge. The third time the device is broken, there is going to be a charge assessed to parents. But the instances where somebody has broken three is pretty slim, so we're not that worried about that.
And we're not encouraging it either.
No.
The next item that the committee looked at was a proposal from Ocellis Tech for an IT security risk assessment. Mr. Gorski introduced the proposal for a comprehensive IT security risk assessment. Committee members asked questions, which Mr. Feldman satisfied. The committee does recommend the proposal for board approval, and that'll be coming in a minute. And the last item is the bill list for the month of May 2021. Ms. Gorski presented the committee with a revised bill list for the month of May. Mr. Gorski indicated that four vendor names required revisions due to an input error. There was no effect on the bank reconciliation or the board's.
Yes, please, Ms. Siegel.
Thank you. Just a question regarding the iPads. And I'm not parting the Finance Committee, so I'm not sure what the discussion was. But being that years two and three, we're going to have less income coming in, and we're going to have to go back out to the, you know, for taxes, back out in the tax levy. Was there any discussion on possibly just year one, $85, maybe year two, a smaller amount, maybe fifty, twenty-five, whatever, and year three? That way, we still have that money and that income coming in. I'm just curious what some of the discussion may have been.
Yeah, I think some of the committee members should be answering that, because there was, there was a pretty good discussion about that.
Could you please share a little bit of discussion, just so we have an idea?
Ms. Felko, did you want to?
Sure, I'll share. So, there was some discussion about this. We were actually very pleased with this new proposal that came out with it being just charged $85 for the one year. We honestly didn't feel that it was necessary to go out for year two and three for a lower amount. We felt as a committee, we discussed it, that this was more of a second tax on our community and on our community members, and we already have an incredible tax levy on us for the school district. So, we felt that this was a very good compromise by having Apple, having the Apple insurance, and then moving forward to charging if my child has an iPad for, you know, the next three years, I only pay the $85 insurance on it, and I'm covered for the next three years, as opposed to paying $85 every year, and a maximum per family, Mr. Gorski, $170?
Correct.
Okay. So, maximum per family, $170. Now, someone like me who had four at a time in the school, that was, that was a great thing. And I know there are others that have more than two children in the school, in the high school, and they're, you know, that can be a burden. So, we did not even entertain any other charges. We felt that this was a great compromise, and we felt that this, after the large discussion we had at the last board meeting, we felt that this was the best compromise that we could give the community. Anybody else? You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Spot on.
Thank you.
Mr. Polari, you look like you're ready.
Yes, I am. I'm trying to understand.
I don't think Rupert was done yet.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. No worries. Just one follow-up question. School district-wise, Dr. Alvik or Mr. Gorski, do we get a lot of parent complaints regarding the $85 fee? Because as a parent, me, I look at that as my school supplies for the year. It has my books. I don't, I don't stand at Staples anymore, get notebooks, pens, paper. That's my, what I pay in lieu of school supplies. And I know many others that are friendly would feel the same way. So, I was just curious to see if we do get a lot of emails from parents about complaining about the fee.
We do get some complaints about that, according to the high school administration. That doesn't come to the district level, that is handled at the school level.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just procedurally, it's a recommendation from the committee. Does that, is that on here? Do we need to vote on it?
No. This is not, it's not a board piece. It was just, it was a discussion that happened at the board meeting. We brought it back to the committee to have a discussion about it, but letters that go out from the school or procedures like that don't need to be voted on.
Okay. So, I suspect that in the year, I mean, maybe in a year, we'll have the same, you know, a similar discussion, just to see if that, if it works. I mean, I take your point seriously, yeah.
Michelle, I know Mr. Polari's waiting to speak, but we won't be having this discussion in a year, because the only people who will be getting charged will be the incoming freshmen.
Oh, that's true.
So, the way that, the way that this process is set up now, it'll be the incoming freshmen's families who will get charged the $85 for the new device.
Because it's a deployment, new deployment to everybody.
Well, no, for the second year, for next year, the people who have their iPads now, it's not a new deployment next year.
Yes, it is. Yeah. Well, this year.
This year is the new deployment. Everyone will be charged this year.
So, in the fall of 2022, it'll be, so sophomores, juniors, and seniors' parents won't have to pay $85.
Right.
But the freshman parents will.
Okay.
That's my understanding of how that goes. Yes? Am I, thank you.
Yes, but it could be an ongoing discussion. Mr. Polari?
Thank you, Madam President. So, with this, our general fund is going to be impacted by $480?
$408,000.
$408,000. So, that has to be, come from either two sources. One is the tax levy or cut-off program. Am I correct?
Madam?
Yes.
As, as the district budget is and has been at cap over the last few years to meet all the obligations of growth and facilities that we have here, and a very limited amount of revenues that come in through the cap, the answer is yes. In theory, that years two and three, there will be a deficit in revenues collected from parents of $408,000, and that will have to come from, if we are still at cap, cuts in something that may have made it in the draft budget.
So, if it's not capped, then potentially, the initial cost is going to be absorbed by the entire community, not just by the parents?
Yes. This is, it's an interesting issue being involved with this from the beginning. There was a lot of opposition to the initiative from the beginning because of the cost. And then, and then there was a desire to make the parents contribute more for a period of time, and that's how the fees were structured in the collections. Now, it's swinging back a little bit the other way. I guess we have had some increases in state aid over the years, and there's a desire, I'm hearing, to give some back. And, you know, that's part of a dynamic budget process. It changes every year. We'll monitor it and keep an eye on it.
Mr. Begliardi?
Point of order, if I may, Madam President. In, in listening to what the board had previously approved and this change, I respectfully don't know how the, a committee can make a decision to forego monies that you had anticipated in your budget. So, while I agree with the superintendent that generally speaking, the communication comes from the school level, I don't disagree with that, but I think this change is something that the board has to approve, because you're foregoing monies that you have previously voted to collect.
And the committee didn't approve it. The committee was just advised of the communication.
Understood. I, that's what I'm saying, that the committee-level discussion, while appropriate, in my respectful view, is insufficient for the board to change course. In other words, the board approved a budget based upon a set of assumptions. You're changing that set of assumptions intentionally, and I think that also, basically, the general rule of thumb is only the board can undo what the board has done. I believe that this structure, while the communication comes from the school, the structure was established by the board. And so, my, my advice, whether you do it here or at the next meeting, but I believe board action is required in order to implement this change.
Okay.
Because public money's involved.
I, I think, yes, I understand. That's why I, in listening again to the conversation, I asked the question.
Yeah, I'm obviously sort of a newcomer to that conversation, so the more, I had to hear more, and when I heard more, I wanted to interject a modified response to your inquiry.
That makes sense. Did you want to say something, Ms. Kirby?
Yes. Mr. Polari, were you finished?
No, but I guess she picked you, so.
Go ahead.
My only point is that I guess the Finance Committee can make a resolution that we could approve, but if I understood what you're saying, because it has an impact on the overall budget, that has to be amended, too. Am I correct?
You're not amending the budget any more so than you amend the budget by. You're not amending the budget any more so than you amend the budget by not spending money that you anticipated to spend. So, I don't think you're amending the budget, but I think that the financial implications are such that it requires board approval. You're not going to go back and revisit the budget.
Madam?
Yes.
Certainly, I agree with the counselor for years two and three.
Right.
The absence of that four hundred and eight thousand dollars will impact years two and three. Year number one is not going to be that impacted, that it wouldn't just, you know, be absorbed with the eighty-five dollars that's already being collected for the first year. We don't know what the auction results are going to be from when we sell the existing inventory of iPads that can come in more or less favorably to absorb the difference in the repair tweaks for the items being sent back. So, but it certainly would be good to memorialize the sentiment of the board in the minutes.
Yeah, because like Mr. Gorski says, it's not going to impact this budget that we've approved. Going forward, it will be impacting. But if we put it out, it's actually, we've already predetermined the impact.
Yes.
So, how should we structure that?
Again, I don't know if the committee is comfortable that it's making a recommendation tonight, because there was just a discussion. But certainly by the August meeting, there should simply, the board should implement a change in the policy and the monies that you will and will not be collecting from parents.
Ms. Bierman, since you are the vice chair, does that bode well with you?
So, we would take this back on the agenda for the next Finance Committee meeting and look at it as development of a resolution to bring to the next meeting?
Correct, to present it to the board.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
And we would suppress the communication until then? Is it going to get tight with the start of school?
It hasn't gone out yet, but that's going to be, that's very late to go out. So, I don't know if there's something we can do.
I could read a resolution now, if it pleases the board, and you could tweak and vote on it if you wish.
Again, I agree. I think it's straightforward enough, unless the committee feels otherwise.
To make a resolution?
You all know what you're doing. It's pretty clear. I think the board can vote on the resolution this evening, if you're comfortable doing so.
Ms. Skirby?
Yeah, I have some questions. I'm not understanding exactly how it's being structured. So, this year, every parent would be paying the eighty-five dollars?
Yes.
And then in three years? For the next two years, it'll be nothing. And then the third year, it would be another eighty-five dollars. So, in essence, there's going to always be a class that's going to have to pay twice.
Every class will have to pay twice if we stay on the three-year cycle. I'm unclear that an incoming freshman in '22, would they be paying?
Yes.
Even though it's not a newly deployed iPad, it's new to them?
It's new to them. And new families that move in would have to pay that also. Whenever they're handed an iPad, they would have to pay the eighty-five dollars.
But the maximum time you would have to pay as a four-year student at the high school would be twice?
Right.
And when we're talking about the four hundred, it's two hundred thousand a year for year two and three. So, it's not, it's a total, for the refresh after the three years, at this point, it's a total of four hundred thousand. That could change based on the cost of putting new iPads in, correct? The tax levy?
There are variables that will affect the budget, as I mentioned before, certainly.
And enrollment, too.
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
Numbers and its cost.
Mr., wait, are we all done here?
So, what is the eighty-five dollars? Is that insurance, or is that trying? It sounds like what we've used that for is to pay for other things in the budget. So, we're collecting this revenue. Because if we're saying we're going to be four hundred thousand dollars short in the budget next year, how would that be?
It's not four hundred thousand, and I'll let Mr. Gorski. It's not four hundred thousand dollars. It'll be in the third year for the iPads, right? That's earmarked, that's earmarked money generally? Or you put that in the general fund?
I'll explain it again. Year one, everybody's going to, year one of the refresh, the first year of the refresh when students are handed the new devices, there will be an eighty-five dollar charge for parents. Year two, they will maintain that same device and pay no additional eighty-five dollars. And year three, they'll pay no additional eighty-five dollars. So, the parents are paying, in that case, one eighty-five dollar charge, and they're not paying now for years two and three. In aggregate, the district will be short in collections of revenues compared to the way it was previously, two hundred and four thousand dollars in year two and two hundred and four thousand dollars in year three. That money will have to come from adjustments in the general fund somehow. And there are variables here. When we sell the existing devices, depending on the fair market value and what we could get for them, it could be higher or lower than what we anticipate. Enrollment will certainly impact it. You have to keep, I don't know the number on hand, but we have loners, at least fifty of them in the high school, that are there in case one has to go back to Apple and somebody breaks it, that we don't impair instruction in any way. So, Madam President, if you would like, I could read the resolution. This could memorialize this action.
Let's see if anyone has any more questions. My question was, though, if we were proceeding with the eighty-five dollars a year, was that money collected and kept in a separate, not going into the general fund, and kept separately for the next refresh?
Absolutely. The money, every dollar that was collected from parents for iPads was deposited in a balance sheet reserve account, which is called the One-to-One Initiative Reserve. And that money was strictly used for unanticipated new devices, because we had enrollment increases. Or when we refreshed, that money was contributed to the cost of the new leasing of the devices. And that was incorporated and divulged this year when we did a budget presentation.
So, it was specific to the purchase of the iPads?
Yeah, that money doesn't go anywhere else to fill any other budget holes or anything like that. It's strictly for this initiative.
So, then there wouldn't be an impact on the general fund budget, and we would not have to cut programs and raise taxes in year two?
I respectfully disagree.
Except for when we have to buy, it was used to help defray the costs of, if I understand correctly. It was used to defray the cost of the refresh.
And our costs, defray the cost of the refresh. So, that wouldn't happen in year two?
The lease payments from that affect every year. So, if we're not collecting four hundred and eight thousand dollars, that lease payment that we're going to have to budget for is going to be four hundred and eight thousand dollars higher for those second two years.
Okay, so the money has been being paid to defray the cost of the iPad, not simply for insurance. We've been told as parents that it's to pay for insurance, not to pay for the cost of the iPads, just to make that point clear.
Madam, initially, there was an insurance component to it. Now, it's just been a charge.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Tafano?
I think that we should afford the Finance Chair the respect to write this motion. This is not a priority right now that we vote on this tonight. I think the Finance Chair should write that, and we should vote on it next.
You mean, he should see it and take a look at it?
He should be afforded that right.
Madam, Dr. Alvik, did I hear that? That could impair the letter?
It could impair, once we get the devices in the district, we have to get them ready and out to the students before school starts. So, it could impair students getting devices before September, if we wait until the August meeting.
Will it impair, or could it impair?
It could, because we don't know when the devices are getting here. But then the letters would have to go out, and then the devices would have to be handed out to students.
One second, one second.
Can we get an answer if it would definitely impair?
Dr., Mr. Feldman's not here this evening, so I can't ask.
We're still waiting. There's a delay in, I think, in the delivery of the iPad. So, that may buy us some time, but we can't guarantee that. Mr. Rutske, I think...
So, my first question is simple. So, if this is a charge in year one, and then not a charge in year two and three, so my son's a senior upcoming, so I'm going to pay eighty-five dollars. And then year two and three, it's ass out of luck? But, so, there's a flaw in that system.
Yes.
So, if we really want to reduce it, why do we not just go to thirty dollars a year, every year that way you have consistency like we've had, at just at a reduced level? So, I don't know why you would choose to front it and have that where every three years, you're going to have somebody that's going to be a senior that's going to pay eighty-five dollars or whatever your magic number is, and not get their value. So, I would have never complained about eighty-five dollars to begin with, because I'm kind of on the side of that's the cost of everything else. But if you're going to make a decision like that, I just don't understand why you wouldn't reduce the cost, but keep it consistent.
Madam, I think there is a better matching with Mr. Rutske's recommendation, that we could make it thirty dollars a year. And, you know, this was pretty extensively discussed at Finance Committee. We went over the letter, we went over the prices, went over the additional charges. So, to have to take it back to Finance now seems like it could be an unnecessary delay, because all we're doing with this rezo is memorializing it, with one exception, if it pleases the committee, to make it thirty dollars per year instead of eighty-five one time.
But it's not eighty-five one time. It's eighty-five twice. So, now you're talking about another gap of funding.
What do you mean eighty-five twice?
She's saying freshman, senior.
Every student is going to, so that's a hundred and seventy dollars. So, now you're taking it down to one thirty. It's another forty dollars. That's going to have to come from, you're going to increase your four hundred and eight thousand dollars now to whatever impact that forty dollars puts.
Okay.
This seems like a big number, like getting bigger. I'm not sure, and so we used to charge seventy-five dollars for repair. Now, we're not charging anything for the first two repairs.
Per year.
A hundred-something dollars for the third one, significantly higher on the third.
It just seems like a complete change of what was in place. It's not just a tweak. It's a complete overhaul. And now you're leaving gaps in the budget in certain years that are going to have to be filled somewhere, somehow, which, again, we know magically only comes from a few select sources. I guess I'm just confused, and so for the rush question, like the timing question, I guess I'm not clear on that either. I was thinking if you're going to charge eighty-five dollars anyway, what's the difference if we charge eighty-five dollars in August or September? But now I'm speaking out of both, because if we're going to do thirty dollars a year, now it does matter when you send out that letter. So, I guess I'm just confused why this got this big of an adjustment, which is really not in the school district's best interest, because budgetary, we're taking a four hundred and eight thousand dollar reduction, which has to come from somewhere, is my point. And you're going to get, you know, those repairs, we're going to have to cover now.
No, the seventy-five dollars, we don't get, we won't get charged the first two times a student has to send an iPad back. So, the district is not charging, because we don't get charged for that. That's in the Apple Care.
Because we use to cover our cost of packing it and shipping it.
Because we used to get charged.
So, now we're going to be not recovering that expense?
No, but it's about, yeah, whatever the cost of shipping is. Yes, you're right. So, we would not get the shipping cost. So, that cost of the repair now aligns with the Apple Care, where the district doesn't get charged the seventy-five dollars for the first two times, but the third time, that's the cost that they would be charged, that the district would be charged. So, it would be the charge that would go to the parent.
And what's that number?
I don't have the letter in front of me, Mr. Gorski.
Third accidental crack screen in one school year would be two hundred and fifty-five dollars and ninety-five cents, including six ninety-five shipping. That sounds like a very specific fee that the high school administration must have got from?
Directly from Apple.
From Apple. It does seem like there's some more variables being considered, maybe that should go back to Finance.
Yeah, the mathematics has to, I think, work. Well, what is the pleasure of the board right now?
I think it should go back to Finance. It seems like there's more ideas that are presenting themselves right now, and it needs to be discussed further.
I think there should be a clear...
But do the alternatives come from that committee or from the high school? It was recommended by the school, not by the committee.
Right, so in collaboration with the Finance Committee, maybe we can have Dr. Higgins at the meeting and discuss it. Is he here now? I don't know if you want to have him speak now to that.
Madam President, one point of clarification for all of us is that chip manufacturing is way behind. If you look at the car purchases, computer purchases, there's a backlog.
That's what we're thinking.
So, just to make sure that, you know, Dr. Alvik's point about not having it in a timely manner could very well be. I just want to remind the board of that.
They're already purchased, right? They're on their way.
We're waiting for them, yes.
We got the cases so far.
We suspect that there's going to be a delay, but we can't, we really need to, I mean...
So, if we already laid out payment for them, what's the difference if we wait an extra month to get payment from the parents?
Because the parents have to be notified.
Right, but what's the difference if they're notified a month out, if we already made the purchase? It's not like we need their money to purchase the units. So, we might as well just wait and have this sorted out where it works out for everyone, instead of rushing.
Correct, I agree. Well, if, and if it becomes, you know, critical, then we'll have to call a special meeting in order to do this. Ms. Belko?
It shouldn't become critical, because as far as I remember, we did make a motion on this board to not clear the data from the devices that were handed back in, so that they could be redistributed in September, should we not have the other iPads. So, that was a decision that was made by this board to make sure that we don't, you know, because one of the first things that they said that they would do was wipe them all clean. And I do remember bringing that up and saying, please don't do that until we have the other devices in hand. Otherwise, our students come September are not going to have devices. So, that, to me, shouldn't be critical. And then if the devices don't come until October, then in October, we should already have had a decision. Because if we're going to make that decision in August, we'll have that decision. And then when we hand in the old device, hand the new device with a check.
Is there consensus here? Seems like everybody's okay with that. What I think we should do, though, Dr. Alvik and Mr. Higgins, if you're...
Dr. Higgins.
Dr. Higgins, I apologize, is perhaps put out something of an explanatory, you know, without committing, that the board is still communicating how it's going to, you know, to be. Just because we don't want to give parents a last-minute notification. I mean, it's probably going to make it more confusing, but our apologies upfront. But we should inform the, we should inform the parents that we are discussing how to proceed with the finances of that. Is that acceptable, I think? Dr. Alvik, isn't it? You can work something out. Yeah, let's not give the parents last minute, because September, you know, hopefully, we'll have it done by August. But we don't want to give them that much in September.
Just a quick question, since it was raised. If the iPads do not come in, the students will get back their iPad that they had last year?
It probably will not be their exact iPad, but they will get an iPad to be able to start the school year.
Okay, so then to your point, they'll probably be wiped, because it won't be their iPad.
No.
They'll just sign into their account.
To their account, yeah, that's what they would have done with the new one, too. Okay. And then will they be paying the eighty-five dollar charge to get back the old one, or will we wait until the new one?
I don't think so. I think we would wait until we had the final letter for the new one.
Okay.
All right, so, Ms. Bierman, is that acceptable as vice chair?
Yes.
Okay, well, agreed, good. Okay, are you finished with your report?
Yes, thank you.
Madam, just going back to Finance now.
So, yeah, to be clear, that whole discussion is going back to Finance for some kind of, you know, discussion and maybe clarification. And then it still will be brought before the board for a vote to Mr. Gagliardi's point. I do believe if we're talking about finances like that, the board should have to vote on it, okay? Mr. Gagliardi, thank you for your advice. Go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I think the direction from the board president is that the committee, working in collaboration with the central office and the high school administration, should prior to the August eighteen meeting, bring to the board a recommendation for action in connection with this matter. And the board is committing to taking some action in response to that recommendation at the August eighteen meeting. That's, I think, the direction from the board president.
Yes.
So, madam, I beg your pardon, I hate to hold this up, but it's not going to Finance then. It's just going to be collaborative between the high school administration and the central office of the administration. The Finance Committee, working in, the Finance Committee, comma, working in collaboration with the central office and the high school administration, comma,
should develop and bring before the board prior to the August eighteen meeting a recommendation in connection with this. And the board, reacting to that recommendation, is committing to making a decision on the eighteenth of August, so as not to further delay the matter. That's what I think the board president has resolved here.
Yes, what he said. Thank you. Just to put a little levity into the room, sorry, folks, I, we just, we just need to... We'd like it to be clear, for everyone. So, it takes a little longer sometimes to clarify things than, but that's what we want. Next person for committee, Mr. Nickotinsky.
So, in the Personnel Committee, we went over the hiring process and applicants for the Special Education Supervisor. We went over the exit survey vacancy list and district webmaster position, which is just a stipend. It's not a new position. just a stipend, it's not a new position, and that's about it.
All right. Any questions about that?
So were those positions filled, or?
Not yet. We're voting on Special Ed Supervisor today, on the agenda.
Yeah, I think some of, some of those discussions are still in the works, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other?
Would the superintendent make a recommendation of the candidates?
I'm sorry?
Would the superintendent make the recommendation of the candidates?
It's on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah.
This is, the candidate for the Special Ed Supervisor is on the agenda for this evening. The district webmaster slash communications facilitator and student transportation coordinator, it's a job description that's on the board agenda this evening.
So it's an update of the job, those two are updates for the job description, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Next commitment, Ms. Gervie.
Yes.
Please.
I have our Policy Committee update. We discussed quite a few policies. The first one was Policy sixteen forty-eight Restart and Recovery Plan. We, the committee requested an update on the reopening plans. Dr. Alvik shared a brief overview of the newest plans and that the district is following the guidance from the Road Forward. Dr. Alvik shared that she suspects a new policy will be forthcoming for the new guidance. And we discussed that the restart and recovery policy would probably be abolished at some point going forward as the new, I guess, Road Forward plan was, was put into the state. As the emergency ends and that policy concludes, we would at some point be abolishing that. Policy, next was Policy one six four point two, Board Member Participation at Board Meetings Using Electronic Device. The committee is recommending an update to that policy for reasons that board members should be allowed to participate in board meetings using electronic devices would expand to, for reasons such as medical conditions, vacation, or out-of-town travel. It is also recommended to add that this would be approved no more than three dates per year. Currently, that policy only allows for participation for medical conditions, and we had a lengthy discussion about expanding it for other reasons and putting a limit to the amount of times that you would be able to do that per year. The policy also already establishes a procedure in which that the board member would have to, in writing, send the request to the Board President, and the Board President would have to either approve or disapprove such reasons for wanting to participate using an electronic device. So that is on the agenda for First Read. Should I go through all of them and then ask for comments at the end?
Yeah.
Okay. Policy one six seven, Public Participation in Board Meetings. The committee is recommending the change to Number Two to read. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to four minutes duration or less. The time shall not include any response from a representative of the board to any participant's question. The clock will stop during any responses from a representative of the board. At the end of the four minutes, the participant's time will be over. The committee also discussed allowing participants to speak more than once during public forum, but is not recommending that at this time. And the committee also is recommending that we use a timer clock that is visible for the speaker so that speaker make, during public forum, can see when their minute is, when their time is elapsing. Policy oh one three one, Bylaws, Policies and Regulations, that was revised. The major revisions, it now references and defines the terms of regulations because boards are required by statute and administrative code to adopt certain regulations. Revised Policy Guide oh one three one now has the option for the board to abolish a bylaw policy or regulation at one meeting. Strauss Esme typically recommends abolishing a bylaw policy or regulation when statutes or codes change and the bylaw policy or regulation is no longer applicable, or when the bylaw policy or regulation is replaced with a new bylaw policy or regulation with a different policy number due to statutory or administrative code changes. Because of these reasons, it is more efficient to abolish these bylaws, policies, and regulations at one meeting. In addition, most boards have indicated a preference to abolish bylaws, policies, and regulations at one meeting. The consideration of Bylaws, Policy, and Regulation Section of the Revised Bylaw Guide oh one three one has been revised to outline a process that is more likely to be used in school districts. The revised process is not governed by any statute or administrative code, therefore, a board may revise this section to meet local needs. Bylaw oh one three one is not mandated by statute or administrative code, but the board should have a bylaw that addresses the bylaw policy and regulation management. And I think for that one also, we said that we would be putting the Regulation Guide on the website as well as the District Policy Guide, because that is something that we are required to do, is have the bylaw, the policies and the regulations available to board members as well as the public. So instead of just having it, the regulations booked just at the board office, like the Policy Guide, we're gonna be putting the Regulation Guide as well on the website.
Ms. Gervie, just so you know, I did have, we did reach out to Strauss Esme, we're waiting for a, the quote of what that would cost, and that'll be on the next agenda.
And then there were other several policies, three one four two, three two two one. These were all policy regulations mandated with minor revisions to evaluations, evaluation of renewal of non-tenured staff, evaluation of teachers. So these were all updated through Strauss Esme, which are mandated. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Rutske.
The one with regards to remote participation at a meeting, was it discussed how that's gonna happen? If I'm away on vacation, how am I joining the meeting? Is it just, there'll be an open phone line here somewhere that I'm listening to, or was that discussed, video, audio, anything?
It wasn't discussed, but I would assume that it would've been the way we did it, I guess, this past, this past month for the policy, for the committee meetings. Myself and Mrs. Belko participated remotely because we were not in town.
But that meeting was live streamed, right? So you were able to participate via the live stream?
No, we, we called into the WebEx. We had a separate number to call.
And you were able to hear everything?
Yes.
And they were able to hear you?
Yes.
We had no technical difficulties at all. I was able to fully participate in the committee.
And the committee meeting was live and in person?
Yes.
It was a test.
And it passed, sounds like.
Yes, we heard Ms. Belko live and, live and clear.
Loud and clear. It's not really hard to hear me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So that would, that would have to, yeah, the committee would have, the board would have to agree to that change. Anyone else?
Any other questions? No? Okay, then I have the Community Engagement and Communications Committee. We met on July fifteenth at seven PM. We discussed advertising. Dr. Alvik shared the draft of the RFP for an advertising firm. The RFP followed the RFP from Toms River. Dr. Alvik shared that this is, that there is a question about using a firm to accept bids as opposed to the district accepting bids. Mr. Gorski will work with the board attorney to ensure the district would be following statute. The committee discussed that they would like the district to look at accepting bids on their own first and not continuing with an RFP right now. The committee will discuss this again at the August meeting, and we discussed inviting Mr. Moraldo and Mr. Dowling to give us an update on what they have been doing since they presented at our meeting a couple of months ago regarding sponsorships and advertising. Then we discussed the district webmaster communications facilitator job description. Dr. Alvik proposed a new job description that would consolidate the district webmaster position and the communication position, communications facilitator position into one posting. This would assist the district in creating a process to share information consistently on the website and across social media platforms. There would be more discussion about the position and the stipend in the Personnel Committee meeting. You know, the committee just wanted to be clear that the committee was not recommending to create a new position. The committee, for the last couple of months, has been discussing having more of our information that we already have shared on our social media sites, just to increase our communication in the community. For, for community members that don't get the emails because they're not parents, you know, simply putting maybe those email messages on the Facebook page when they come out so the community as a whole can see those messages. So we just wanted to make clear that the committee was not driving a new job description. We were looking to have more of a social media presence for the information we already have, and then this job description came out of those discussions. We discussed a communications survey. We had discussed it previously, and we said we would put it on hold until the township survey was completed. The committee will be creating a survey, and we will be looking to conduct it in October after the beginning of school to get a pulse for how parents and feel the communication at the beginning of school was, and any recommendations that they have for how we as a district can improve our communications. Lastly, we discussed the school funding formula proposed bill. I think that was discussed in Finance as well. The committee had discussed and requested inviting Senator Greenstein, who co-sponsored one of the bills to our upcoming Board of Education meeting. And that was...
And I think also the, our two assemblymen, I don't know that we said that specifically, I, that was my understanding, but that's up to, you know, the board. Did we say that?
Yes.
Did we? I just remembered Greenstein.
I just remember Senator Greenstein, but I'm not sure.
But I would, I mean, I would be open to inviting offering. And that would be to a public Board of Education meeting, not a committee meeting.
Right. Any questions?
And I think we said Senator Greenstein because she's one of the co-hosts of the bill.
Yes, yes. Okay, any questions? Anyone else, Mr. Tofano?
Yes, BGT meeting in July.
Can you get a little closer? Sorry.
The first item on the agenda was the Eagle Scout Project Presentation. Student Alika Upagunduri presented an Eagle Scout service project to construct display shelving at the Oak Tree School Library. The committee fully supports Alika, proceeding with her project and thanked her for her efforts. The second item on the agenda was SSP Architects' Recommendation for Demographic Study. SSP Architects recommended that the district be prepared with an updated demographic study so that it will be available in a timely fashion for submission to NJ DOE along with the project should the board decide to proceed in this manner. This is, to this end, administration received proposals from three demographers for committee consideration. The committee recommended tabling the matter so that they could further review the proposals. Following the meeting, demographers statistically forecasted providing a sample of demographic report, which they prepared for another district for the committee to review. This report was posted to the board docs post-meeting. Number three on the agenda was the Epic, Epic Updated Cost Estimate for additions, renovations at Barclaybrook, Brookside, and Monroe Township High School. Administration provided three district estimates prepared by Epic, which detail costs for alternate construction types for additions and renovations projects. Administration clarified that these are hard construction costs and do not include soft construction costs as the design fees, legal costs, and contingencies. Number four was the middle, middle school partial roof replacement project update. Administration reported that the project is proceeding on schedule. The three sections of roof membrane overlay have been substantially completed, and the contractor is currently working on the removal and replacement at the nineteen ninety-seven A Wing building. Necessary materials for the job have been delivered in a timely fashion. Number five on the agenda was the Oak Tree School Baseball Field Electrical Upgrade. Administration reported that the committee chair has been in discussion with a local electrician, Walter Danley Electric, regarding donating services to complete this work. Administration will be meeting with Mr. Danley next week to review existing conditions at the site and to discuss his proposal for those services. And I have a question. Mr. Gorski, have we spoke to Mr. Danley?
Mr. Gorski?
This is the week we said we were going to.
Madam, I could tell you that Mr. Teig has reported to me, Mr. Teig's our facility director, that he met the electrician that you recommended at the field, and there was a comprehensive review of the lighting, and it was deemed that all the installations so far were proper, and that there just seems to be a break in the line, as Mr. Teig previously reported, and that's what has to be addressed.
And did we have a, that he's gonna, he's gonna do it, or?
That's all I know, is they met there. I don't have a proposal, I don't, I don't know if there's a fee.
Okay.
I don't know about the material costs, so I guess more is coming on that.
Thank you.
Would, would you like Dr. Alvik to ask that that would, you know, get an update on the next committee meeting for that? So we know definitively?
I'll, I'll email Jerry myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anyone else?
That's my report.
Any questions? Ms. Rupa? No, Rupa, put her hand up first, please.
Ladies first, I insist. So, just a question regarding the demographer study. Did the committee, I heard, I think you said we tabled the discussion? Is there a reason why we tabled it, knowing that we need the demographers' report in order to put a referendum through? Should we be getting that started in the process right now for getting a demographer selected?
We wanted to basically have more information at our ready so we can make a more informed decision. So that's what we're waiting on.
Between three companies, right?
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Tofano?
Absolutely.
We asked Mr. Teig if, because we have, we're waiting for the SSP design study, and SSP asks for the demographers, but I, we asked if that was necessary for us to get the design, because that's what we're still waiting for, and then we're going to include that design study and compare the Epic and the other ones altogether. And we asked if that demographer, you know, that demographer information was necessary for us to proceed with the referendum information, and he said no. So we are gonna have to address it, but it's not, it's not incumbent upon us to get it for the discussion about the costs of construction.
Okay. And how long does it take usually for a demographer to pull the report together for a district? Just out of curiosity.
Mr. Gorski, go ahead.
The process in the past has been, the critical date is October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. That is when we do a complete student count of all of the district's students and segregated by Special Education, Regular Education, because that goes into the design, obviously. And that takes about a couple months to assemble the report and have it audited. It's usually finished around twelve thirty-one. And at that time, the auditor begins to report, and it usually can assemble it by the last month in January or, or early February. That's how the process went last time. Of course, there's committee meetings in between where, you know, you're gonna deliberate and see the numbers and find them acceptable or not, and have questions answered.
Thank you.
Ms. Rupa, Ms. Segal, are you done?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I know, keep interrupting people. Mr. Rutske.
Peter, I just wanna ask some questions and get some clarity on the electrical line for the school board. So, I wasn't sure, did you say this person is donating their time?
I had a, I had a discussion with him, and I told him that I felt it would, it would be nice of him, basically, to help out the district. And I said we do have a policy in place that we want to start taking in some advertisers. And I spoke to Mr. Gorski and Mr. Teig, and they, they also told me that we can offer him, I didn't offer him, but the administration could offer him some kind of ad space for his donated services. And at our last estimate, I think it was sixteen thousand dollars we got as a proposal. So that would be a significant savings to the district, and it would be a really nice thing for Mr. Danley to do. He's a Monroe-based electrician. He's a Monroe-based electrician.
That would be my next question.
And he's a very good man.
That's fantastic. It'd be whatever he can do.
I think Mr. Gorski wants to respond to that.
Madam President, Mr. Tofano, with all respect, this is the first time I'm hearing about a quid pro quo with an advertising component to it. I hadn't heard anything about that before.
I spoke to you and Jerry about that.
I, what I heard from you and what I heard from Jerry was that this gentleman was donating his time and donating materials. A donation, to me, is not if you're getting something in exchange for it in advertising.
I spoke to Jerry Tagg about this in detail. I asked him if we can give him some advertising space. He goes, and I also spoke to you about it, and both of you said, yes, we can, we can offer him something. We didn't have a period of time to put up the advertisement, but we did discuss that.
Madam, I absolutely disagree with those facts. I had never heard or agreed to advertising in lieu in the exchange for these services.
We didn't agree to anything. We discussed it.
I never discussed it.
We discussed it at the committee meeting.
And we discussed it at the committee meeting, yes.
I do remember that it was thrown out there. I don't know that it was, nothing was agreed upon, but I know...
Nothing was agreed upon, but it was discussed in detail, as an option.
It was something that you suggested, Mr. Tofano?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
A suggestion, just for the record, is certainly not an agreement or...
Correct.
Yeah, I didn't say agreed. I said we discussed.
Correct. We are not, we are not held to that.
Correct.
It was mentioned, however.
Just wanted to make sure he was getting credit for his generosity and appreciation.
Yeah, you know, and he didn't even ask me for that. I just, if we have, if we have a policy in place for advertising, I think a $16,000 job, in my opinion, would be worth a sign on the field.
Okay, but that is valuable...
That's not my decision, and I didn't offer him that. I brought that up only to administration.
And that's valuable consideration, and again, I think that the full board, Mr. Gagliardi, would have to agree to that, because that is substantive to our funds and our budget.
Agreed.
Okay. Mr. Polori, do you have your hand up, sir?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
In the past two years I've been on the board, I have been advertised, I've been advised several times not to take matters of the school administration into our own hands, not to discuss with anybody. Now I'm beginning to hear that people, or board members, can walk around and make deals with people. Is that legal even?
Okay, let, no, let me answer that.
No, I would like to answer that. He's talking about me, I would like to address him.
Mr. Tofano, please. He has the floor. I will give you the floor if necessary. Are you finished?
Well, I'm done. I just wanna know that, let me just explain. If I have a friend who's a carpenter, and can I just go make a deal with him and say, that's what I want to get done with the school district?
I'm not sure that that's how, what I heard, okay? And you may be hearing it a different way, but I don't believe that that's what Mr. Tofano said. If we know, we've asked, in the past, we've asked board members if they know anybody who can donate funds, or donate their talents, or their skills. You, I believe, yourself, you've often talked about your relationships with people in the community, and how you've talked about having them donate, like I said, skills, or time, or talent. So I think, you know, there's a, there may be a gray line, but I don't think it exists now. Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to clarify something?
Well, what I heard Mr. Tofano say is he didn't talk to the individual about it and didn't make any agreements, because I agree, he couldn't and he shouldn't. But he also said, he didn't, so I don't think there's an issue here. There's an opportunity that has to come before the board, and the board can agree to accept donated services or not. And whether it's with an advertising sign, or a plaque, or a cake, the board can decide how or if to recognize certain donated services. But I did not hear, and I do not believe, that any board committee or any board member made such a deal, and they could not.
I mean, and sometimes we do give out awards or certificates thanking somebody for their generosity, so, you know, if there is a suggestion that we may use advertising space for that, again, there was no promise made to, there should, there should be no promise made to any individual. We cannot make promises. It is part of our ethics. But we have all, I've heard nearly every member talk about relationships in the community, or their efforts to try to bring somebody in, or get donations, and things like that, again, without valuable consideration. Let me, now, let me give Mr. Tofano an opportunity. Let's not have an argument.
I don't know if Mike's memory is serving him correctly, but at the end of that $16,000 proposal, at the end of that meeting, I specifically went up to Mr. Gorski and asked him specifically, is it okay if I reach out to a contract, or to contractors in the area and ask if anyone is willing to donate their time and services? And he gave me the approval that it was proper, and that I could do it as long as I didn't promise anything, and I didn't. What I did was, I reached out to several electricians, and Mr. Danley was the only one willing to help the district. He was not offered any services. I don't have any business dealings with Mr. Danley. He was just a nice man who was willing to help the baseball team in this town have a scoreboard that the Monroe baseball, Russ, okay, donated his time and money to, and put it up with the idea that the electric to it was working properly. Our electric line is not working properly. So rather than us spend, this district and all the taxpayers sitting here spend $16,000 to fix that line, I sought a solution to help the taxpayers in Monroe. I did not offer any services. I got it cleared with administration before I did it, and all the rules were followed. And the fact that there are some people here trying to get me in trouble for that is absolutely ridiculous.
Okay, that's enough. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Mr. Gorski?
Thank you.
Briefly, please.
Thank you.
No arguments, please.
Madam President, I think...
No, Mr.?
No, no, no.
No, you were, Mr. Gorski has the floor.
Oh, actually, I didn't know that. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, you know, no arguments is kind of constricting, because you may have an opposing viewpoint, but to Mr. Tofano's point, my memory serves me just fine. I do remember the gentleman after a public discussion on this issue where he suggested publicly to seek a donation, that I said...
What gentleman, Mr. Tofano?
Mr. Sanam, yes, beg your pardon. Mr. Tofano asked me if he could solicit a donation from an electrician for the $16,000. I posted on our website the same.
Okay.
So that is a carryover of what the spirit of the conversation at the board meeting was. So that part I absolutely confirm I do remember, and I said, Godspeed. I absolutely do not remember an advertising component coming with that, because then it is not a donation any longer.
Okay.
And if the board wishes to approve that as part of the electrical service, to offer a sign, or a banner, or whatever it should be, that has to be a board action. I can't authorize that.
Well, we're not, I don't think that was authorized at all. I think it was part of a discussion and part of an appeal, perhaps, for Mr. Tofano. But I think we're going, Mr., you have one more moment, and we're moving on. Because I think we got the message.
You can move on, Madam President. You need to listen to, the question I'm asking is not about trying to attack anybody or demean anyone. I mean, if somebody's trying to take, save taxpayers' money, God bless them for doing that. My question is, I've been told by the previous president and the vice president that every communication with a member outside should go through the administration. So my point is that can I just go solicit somebody to help the school district without going through the administration? That was my question, not about whether he spoke to him, he's doing a favor.
Okay. Mr. Gagliardi, you wanna try to clarify that?
Sure. So the answer to Mr. Polori's question is very clearly, no, comma, no board member should be engaged in that activity. But under these specific circumstances, it's clear, Mr. Tofano and Mr. Gorski agree that there was a discussion where a member of the central office said, if you want to solicit donations, go ahead. And Mr. Tofano did that. Mr. Tofano brought, I guess before the committee, but certainly before the board, one possible way of recognizing the individual for his donations. No commitment was made, and no decision has been made. And I think that's where things are left, and I think that's appropriate.
So, okay, so, going forward, I think we should, you know, just read that, and we've put that in the public. We have actually said this more than once about asking people for their, their skills, their time, and donations. But we cannot personally make a transaction with someone in the board. I mean, let's be realistic. You know, we, people talk to us, people ask us questions as board members. We should, if it comes to the point where somebody like the electrician is ready to make a commitment, then it should go through the administration. We should be told, and then the whole board should be informed. I think, I think we can then take it on a per-issue basis and try to keep it reasonable. Okay? All right, thank you. Anybody else with committee reports? I think the public...
As there was no curriculum committee, there will be no curriculum report.
You sure?
I'm positive.
Okay. I just want to remind the public, the reason why we keep this committee, the reports in before the public forum, which we're gonna do next, I promise you, is that in case any of this discussion impacts what members of the public would like to say, I thought it was important to keep it like that in order for the, because it is on the agenda, the public can comment, and you might not have come here for something that you heard tonight as a committee report, but you are certainly welcome to have a, you know, come to the podium now under, under the next public forum to make a comment as to what you just heard. So if I may, I would like to invite the public to come. Please state your name, your full address, and anyone like to start? Please come to the podium. And the, you'll have four minutes, and it is merely on the agenda. So if I interrupt you, it's only because what you might be saying is not on the agenda, you'll be able to have enough time in the next public forum.
This is on the agenda, Betty Saberito, 2 Barrymore Drive. I am the leader of the district's Special Education Parent Advisory Group, and I am making a statement on behalf of the group, along with my co-leaders. We are here tonight with regard to the direction of our Special Education Department, and we would like to question the process and decision-making behind the hire indicated on the agenda. We also question whether the district truly understands the desperate need for change in our Special Education Department, and the need to move in the right direction for the success of our students. We are sensitive to the fact that there are items that should remain confidential, and we will adhere to that. CPAG is a state-mandated group. Guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education states that the purpose of CPAG is to provide direct input on policies, programs, and practices that impact services and supports for children with disabilities, and to advise on matters that pertain to education, health, and safety of children with special needs. The state's guidance further states that when parents are trusted and valued as advisors, they are empowered to advocate for the change that can result in positive outcomes for all stakeholders, and are less likely to feel isolated outsiders trying to fight the system. We have worked diligently to forge a collaborative relationship with the district, but at this time, we do not feel trusted or valued. In fact, we do not feel that the district regards CPAG as a partner at all. We have been patient with district leaders and supportive of any positive efforts. The group has been advocating for eight years, nearly a decade, for change and equalization for our Special Education students, and yet it is apparent that little has changed. Changes of any are incremental and happen too slowly. There seems to be this idea that we are doing better than XYZ District, or we are improving from where we were X years ago. But if the district continues to tell themselves that everything is great, and we are doing all we can to advance our students, we inhibit ourselves from making improvements. To be clear, many of the issues of compliance and practice should have been corrected long ago, so this idea that we have to be understanding of time constraints is simply not acceptable. They should have been working on. Consider, for example, ongoing issues with reading and inclusion. These, excuse me. These have been our top two challenges for quite a number of years, and our students are no better off than they were when we started advocating. It is not the aim of CPAG to continuously have to point out the ongoing deficiencies in our programs, and yet it appears that there is little to no action to rectify the issues that we continue to bring to the forefront. This is a disconnect happening within special ed, and students are caught in the middle, not receiving an appropriate education. Additional administrative positions, which CPAG has long advocated for, are critically important hires in this district, and undoubtedly important to the future of special education in Monroe Township. With 17.36% of our students currently falling under the umbrella of special education, and the majority of our funding, both from the state and federal, coming in is for special ed, we need to ensure that any hires, especially administrative, are well-suited to serve the needs of our district, and ensure that all students are receiving an appropriate education, and that we are following code and guidelines. That as a district, we are advocating for the students not only to meet their legal rights, but to fulfill our moral and ethical obligations. We appreciate that CPAG was a part of the committee that interviewed candidates, I'm sorry, applicants for the vacated position of supervisor of special education in 2020, and now again, the additional supervisor in 2021. However, it seems that our feedback was not considered and utilized. During the interview process this past spring, it was stated that if interviews did not yield a worthy candidate, we would continue the search. The committee agreed on this, and also reached a consensus on recommendations, although others would move forward as well. Additionally, we question whether the supervisors were called upon to participate in the second round of interviews, as it was stated repeatedly that this new hire would work hand-in-hand with them for the success of special education. If that did not happen in the second round, or if there had been concerns with candidates that the committee had a consensus on, it would have been preferable to review, to reopen the interview process. That should speak to the importance of filling all vacancies appropriately. All positions in special ed are of utmost concern to CPAG, and we need to be confident in the choices that the district makes. CPAG has spent the better part of the past few years voicing concerns about special ed issues not being addressed properly. Pressing issues include those of non-compliance in areas such as transportation, compensatory education, LRE, FAP, and IEP.
Ms. Saberito, may I ask you to just finish the next sentence?
Yes. Administrators and staff members change schools or roles and leave the district altogether, and our students are left behind. It is unfathomable that a child can enter Monroe Township School District as a four-year preschooler, move up through the elementary schools, transition to adulthood, and still not given, be given the education that allows him to meet their full potential, and lacks skills necessary to be a functional member of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Good evening.
Hello. Good evening. Please state your name and your address, please.
Rabbi Zach Lakovsky, 261 Gravel Hill Road.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to be here, and really thank you to the entire Board of Ed for all the tireless efforts on behalf of education for our children. My wife and I are also dedicated to education, and work closely with members of the community, both the younger ones and the active adults, and it's very rewarding to hear how passionate you are, and the dedication and commitment. Very, very special. Thank you. We have been running high holiday services that are open to the community for 20 years now, ever since we came here.
Rabbi, I'm not sure that that is, it's not really on the agenda at this time. You will have another opportunity to speak to that. It sounds like that you're going to talk about facilities?
Yeah.
Yes. If I, if I may, sir, you will get an opportunity to do that at the next public forum. This is purely about the agenda. So may I ask you to just hang in there a little bit?
This evening or the next meeting?
No, no, this meeting.
Oh, this meeting, but later on in the evening?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
On our second forum. I apologize for the inconvenience. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the agenda?
Hello, I'm Sarah Aziz, 3 Launcelat Drive. At the policy committee meeting, board members decided to allow remote participation for themselves, for their own convenience, but did not extend this courtesy to members of the public. For the past year, or the past several months, members of the public have been allowed to participate remotely, call in, send an email, public comments, and the meetings haven't lasted until 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning. In fact, the last meeting wasn't any longer than some of these other meetings that have been done remotely. This remote participation has allowed people to participate in public forums who have disabilities, seniors and others who can't travel at night, parents with young children who they can't bring here, and who cannot find babysitters, and people with other obligations, and, and now that, all that is banned. Now, only the people who are able to be here physically are able to participate in public forum. And I really think that the board should reconsider greater remote participation for members of the public. I think it is, it will go a long way towards community engagement, which I understand was one of the priorities of this new school board, and so I would ask the board to reconsider this. Thank you very much for your time.
I'd like to speak to that. I think it is still under advisement, and we're, we were, in our committee meeting, I believe we were talking about the local finance board and the emergency ability for remote, so I don't think we've really, like I said, we had a test case, we're trying to work it out, and... the emergency use because of COVID, will, will that change the Open Public Meetings Act and change the, the remote obligation during an emergency? So I, we're still working that out, and it's under advisement. Dr. Alvik, you had mentioned that you were going to try to check, did we get any other information?
I have not gotten any other information on that yet.
Ms. Gagliardi, do you have anything to add to that?
No. What, what boards choose to do will be confined by what the governor does with the state of emergency coming to an end, assuming that that actually happens.
Right.
But before COVID, there were cases which defined how a board can participate remotely. I'm unaware of any pre-COVID that talked about remote public participation.
Right.
So this is still a, an area that has not been defined by code or case law.
And I think that we will, we will try to define it ourselves within the parameters, and like, you know, it's changing, the technology's changing, things have changed with the epidemic, so we will, we'll try to make it work somehow, and be consistent.
Prakash Parap, 33, Dana Drive. With respect to, I heard that, I also read that legislatures are passing a bill where there'll be a special committee which will be looking into our funding formula. So I request that who all are here, we must try to make sure who are going to be selected, and how we can influence them with our township interest, okay? So that the wordings in the formula, whatever legal things, we should, as a group, think over it, and because I have seen some of the mayors are writing the bills, because they take part in the legislation, so same way we should do that, okay? So that's a request. The second question is SSP design study. Can you please tell me what is the timeline, when we will have this SSP design study? Because I don't want demographic, oh, study to be done, and no can kicking. I have seen that certain decisions which BOE proposed in February were not acted upon by administration, so that is old story. That time I said, please, don't do that. So what is the SSP design study, when it is going to come, and when we will have referendum? So my time is still on, you know, clock.
Could you just-
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Okay. I, did Mr. Tag give us, has anyone spoken to SSP from the administration?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Alvik, please.
We've met twice now with SSP. We have another meeting tomorrow with them, where we're working with them on their, their designs. They, their proposal at the BGNT meeting, the last BGNT meeting before the board approved their proposal, said eight to ten weeks, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Gorski? Am I thinking that correctly?
I believe that's-
I think it's eight to ten weeks for them to finalize it. So yeah, we're, there, there are ongoing meetings happening with them so that they can meet that timeline.
Okay.
Could, could, to Dr. Parab's point, could we ask them for an update and maybe a date certain? I mean, they may not give it to you, because I know we have in, in that resolution a preference, but could we ask them how close they are, or what their projection is?
I can ask them. I don't know if I'll have the answer, but I can ask them.
But we can, I think, asking on a regular basis, every time maybe you meet with them, how far are you, that, that may help the process along.
President, what we need is a timeline.
Right.
So next meeting, if y'all have timeline correct, this is the way we are happy enough. Now, coming to the, I saw the agenda, and, you know, I was surprised to see resignation of Dr. Alvik. What I can say is, she has built a good career in our school district, and she has been, I have seen her as building a career, being a vice principal, principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent, okay? Now, she's retiring. What I can say is, she's talented, and during her retirement, if she has adventure, are going to do, be in academia and be successful, it is always there for her. The root cause of regular changes, you know, I have been coming to the, these meetings for five years, and I have seen this is the third change occurring, and this concerns me. So what I request is, please, wholeheartedly, if there are performance issues, let them be resolved within the administration, working together. If there are relationships with BOE, then let them be resolved in a good faith. Unless we understand and take actions, an assignment missed, or anything, and problems solved in time and working together, this will continue. So I wish Dr. Alvik all the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rabbi from Foot in Burn Court. I couldn't say much better than what Mr. Parab said. First of all, I do want to thank-
Do you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear your address, sir?
14 Burn Court.
Vernon?
B-Y-R-N-E Court.
Okay. Thank you.
He put it very eloquently, and I do want to thank Ms., Dr. Alvik. She has done a fantastic job in navigating the school through the pandemic. I think we will definitely miss her. My gut feeling says that she's not retiring. I think she's being shown the door, but that's my gut feeling. So I, I do have some specific questions for you, Ms. Arminio. I have been following these meetings for quite some time, and a couple of months ago, I, I made a comment saying that the school district, that the school construction project is going at a snail's pace, and I think the snail is starting faster. And you mentioned in May that you have a target for September of next year for the referendum. Now, a school project of this size requires a project plan that has phase one, phase two, phase three, N number of phases, and timelines, to Dr. Parab's point. Do you have a document that shows me right now that you have all these phases defined? Because you've been talking to this SSP and all these other consultants for quite some time. Do you have a document right now? My son is in school right now, and I'm very concerned about it, and that's the reason why I'm standing here.
Well, we were presented with a document timeline from SSP. We did not vote on that one in particular. We are trying to follow that as a, as an outline. But in order to move forward, and I will defer to Dr. Alvik, but in order to move forward, we need certain, in order to start spending the money and going forward and making decisions, this board-
If I could interrupt, I understand all those things.
Okay.
Right? And we have been following this, this charade for several years, right? You should have a project definition, and project guidelines, and project phases by now, and you're relying on this SSP to kind of tell you what they should be. Six months have gone by, and SSP has sent a document on May 5th, and as of now, we are still kind of discussing. To me, it feels like we are still in explorative stages. Is it not right?
We are still relying on costs to come in.
If you were to divide this project in phases, would you say this is a phase one, phase two, phase three?
That's a very good question, and I would, I would have to defer to our professionals, because I am not-
Okay. We have been discussing for several months, and this is probably the most important topic for this board.
I agree.
And you guys should have some idea in terms of which phase you guys are in. What phase are you in?
I think we're in the beginning phases of getting together our cost estimates.
So with Dr. Alvik leaving, I would imagine that the next superintendent would have to sign off. And so this project is going to be postponed for another six months at a very minimum. So according to SSP's guidelines, you, the, the, the school, the earliest time, the school is, if the, the, the new school will, will start is September 2026. And with all these changes, with you guys, with you admitting that you're probably in the initial stages of phase one, at a very minimum, the school will be open probably 2027.
Well, I don't know that that's the case, but-
Well, based on the deadlines, and based on you admitting right now that you are still in early phase one stages, it's not going to be before 2026.
I can tell you that in, we, I have been through referendums that have not passed based on questions from the public, that they don't have accurate information.
You guys had six months so far, but still, you are still in early stages of phase one.
Okay.
Madam? The, the gentleman brought up a, a very important point here, that I think it's, it's critical for the board to discuss, and that, that is, the timeline, as preliminary as it is, and how that's impacted by the superintendent retiring.
Okay.
I, I have been part of this process in the past, where Dr. Hamilton was engaged in a referendum project, and when he left, it wasn't touched at all by the interim that followed. It was held for the permanent superintendent, and I think the gentleman's estimate of a six-month delay because of the effect that a retiring, and then an interim placement, that may be what the board wishes to do, that has been the case in the past, and then a search for a full-time. Certainly, nobody is more influential on the design of school construction than the chief school administrator. That is a critical element of this, and, and I am sounding concerned to the board that this will materially affect the timetable.
Well, that remains to be seen, and thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Sarendra Valbanani. We live at 10 Belmont.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry to see you go, Dr. Alvik. I have a great respect for educators, and I think in the last four years, me and my wife have donated more to the school system than anyone else in town. Right now, 2.9 workers for one retiree. In 10 years, it drops to two to one. We need to do more for our children. Three years ago, we had a school referendum. It didn't pass. What's ironic is that there are people on the board now who actively campaigned against a referendum. Should it not, should they not have at least have another option? Say, maybe 80 million for a school? Little too much? Can we meet somewhere in the middle? We did nothing. Construction costs have gone up 35% in the last three years. Now, if we go five years out, probably another 25, 30%, our budget's going to be blown. So you guys have to get your act together. You're really, really big and competent, and it's hurting the kids. I mean, and try to be nicer on social media, and stop the bullying. People are getting sick of it, and it's embarrassing for the school, the school district, and the town. Cut it out.
Well, I wasn't going to speak in this section, but now I will. Brian Fabiano, 19. Patricia Place.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fabiano, just repeat your address.
19, Patricia Place.
Thank you.
It's amazing that people will stand up here, scream about a referendum, scream about rushing buildings. Where were all these people when these referendums failed? Not once, twice, more than twice. Where was everybody then? A new board sits here, and magically, in six months, it's all this board's problem. I'm not asking you to respond.
Okay.
Excuse me. Magically, in six months, this board has to fix all the issues for all these years in this town. It's absurd. It's a political hit piece for people to get up here and say, in six months, this board has done. What about the failed referendums? Who was the board president then? This is nonsense. But what I want to talk about more is, we're fighting people on the board who are going out and trying to get free services for the town? We're talking about iPads. We have a deficit. We don't have enough money. We're talking about year after year, there's not enough money coming in, but when we're looking for free services, it becomes an issue? I remember not too long ago, Mr. Pelori stood in front of the school with a technology company, I believe it was, nice big happy picture, he came in, $5,000. It's okay to take money from your buddies, but when this board goes out, I am not asking you the question.
You're out of line, Mr. Pelori.
For free. And you know what? To put a-
Madam President.
Madam President.
I will let you speak. Mr. Pelori, the public has the floor.
Madam President, out of order.
You're out of order, Mr. Pelori, please.
To put a sign up on the school property is free. Are all, are all of those boards filled out there right now? Do we utilize every space on our fields right now? So if a guy's going to put up a sign, and we're going to save $16,000, what taxpayer would sit here and say they don't want us to save money? Everything's about saving money. Those referendums failed because we wanted to save money. Nonsense. Absolute nonsense.
Sorry, short people problems. Phoenisha Patel, 15, Eldorado Way. I did not think I would be speaking at a Board of Education meeting exactly a month after walking across the graduation stage, but I feel compelled to be here tonight, as I am probably representing the students in the school district, since our student reps are not here tonight. I'm not going to mince words. It is clear that the majority of this board would like nothing more than Dr. Alvik to leave. Well, Dr. Alvik, we need you. Please reconsider your resignation. The students, educators, support staff, administrators, everyone who works to make sure that students like me have their educational goals met and exceeded, need you. For the members of the public, both here and at home, as well as the board members who would rather ignore the accomplishments and innovations of Dr. Alvik, let me refresh your memories. Academically, we have seen an increase in SAT scores, availability of AP classes, improved instruction for non-college-bound students, as well as, a previous parent mentioned, the lack of, actually, an increase in special education programs. Throughout the last 18 months, Dr. Alvik has relied on science and health professionals to make decisions that affect the health and well-being of not only educators and students in this district, but also the greater community. To her critics who said we didn't open quickly enough, I remind you, schools never closed. Educators and students like me were putting in the effort. Learning in a different form is still learning, irrespective of where it is taking place. Above all, Dr. Alvik has done what no other superintendent did the other 13 years that I have been here, and I have, I was here when Oaktree Ribbon was having its ribbon-cutting ceremony. She listened to us, she supported us, and she showed up for us, even when our events were on Zoom. Barring the few conscientious, knowledgeable, and dedicated individuals sitting on the other side of this podium tonight, this Board of Education is an absolute circus, and I say that with the strongest intentions. Actually, let me rephrase that. You're not a circus, because at least a circus provides entertainment. This is absolute craziness. We should not sit here at 9:00 PM for a Board of Education meeting that also lasts until 3:00 AM. What student is expected to sit here for their voice to be heard at that late, when we have school the next day, or lives to get to? The Board of Education meetings that I have witnessed since the new majority was elected last November have been an embarrassment. They have been nothing short of a shameful excuse for a meeting supposedly run by adults. There are freshmen, myself included, that run meetings, and entire organizations that run more civilized and productive meetings than all of you, combined, but specifically, Ms. Arminia. If Dr. Alvik's resignation is approved tonight, no experienced superintendent who would bring great value and experience to this district will dare apply to be our superintendent with the disrespectful and childish behavior demonstrated by the majority of this Board of Education. You should all reconsider what it is to be concerned and to be representing the school district and the students.
I would just like to make a factual correction. Dr. Alvik, as valuable as she is, is seeking retirement, not resignation. Thank you.
That's her decision. Yes, sir?
Hello, my name is Gutrielsing. I'm a resident of 15 Belmont.
Your address, sir, please?
15 Belmont.
Okay.
So I'm really saddened by the news of retirement of Dr. Alvik. So I have worked for a large firm, and I know for a fact that when someone higher up, they leave the firm, it's usually they say, I'm retiring. But I know the real reason behind it, that someone who has three years left in her contract, she is resigning. And she's resigning for some reasons. It's not that she just like started up and thought that, hey, why don't I retire now? I have three years left in my- That's her decision. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Goodrel Singh. I'm a resident of 15 Belmont.
Your address, sir, please.
15 Belmont. So, I'm really saddened by the news of retirement of Dr. Alvik. So, I have worked for a large firm, and I know for a fact that when someone higher up, they leave the firm, it's usually they say, "I'm retiring." But I know the real reason behind it, that someone who has three years left in her contract, she is resigning. And she's resigning for some reasons. It's not that she just started up and thought that, "Hey, why don't I retire now? I have three years left in my contract, but still I'm going to retire." So, we have been noticing the bullying pattern going on in social media, where the educators and administrators of the school are being called names. They are called thieves. A person who has like a doctorate, or a person who has like a C P license, they are being called thieves on the social media. So, what kind of encouragement these guys are going to take from these kind of situations which are happening? And this is the easiest way for an organization to lose talent, to not encourage them, to call them names, to call them stupid, to call them all these... Like, if I read it, it looks like I'm reading a post from like a five-year-old. Even a five-year-old doesn't behave this way. And if this continues, we are going to lose talent and we cannot replace it. Because people who are going to see what happens to the prior administrators, they are not going to dare to come here. And it's all going to impact the students. It's all going to impact our kids' future. So, we should be really, really taking a step back and thinking about what we say, how we say, how we respect people, and this is like the better of civilized behavior among people. And this is not being followed at all. And this is an area of big concern for me and many, many parents out there. How are we going to educate our kids in this kind of vicious environment? So, I would request Dr. Alvik to not mind the trolls and just think of the good of the kids and stay. Our school district cannot afford to lose her at this critical juncture, so I would request her, on behalf of me and many hundreds, many hundreds of other parents who are not able to come to this meeting, reconsider. Thank you.
I'm just going to make a quick statement about that. I totally agree that behavior on social media should be more mature, and I don't know who you're talking about. I'm not on social media. I stay away from it. But people...
I can show you sometime.
I'd be happy to see. But people should not, people should not, you know, in my opinion, solely in my opinion, I can't restrict that, but I think it would be decent of people not to call names. If someone has voted, as we do vote, and you have an objection to us voting, that seems to me legitimate. However, calling names goes nowhere, and you're right, our students, you know, watch the behavior of adults. So, I would be very cautious as to how we express ourselves on social media. Hello.
Hello.
Name?
Semester 2, Allison Court.
Thank you.
It's actually one, I see a lot of really new faces here. I haven't seen these people ever at a meeting, but it's good because, you know, conversation and communication break down barriers, and that's what we do. Dr. Alvik, I want to thank you for all the years of your service to this district, to our district here in Monroe. You have always been a true professional in all the dealings I've had with you, and for that, I am very grateful, very grateful. My wife and I are very grateful for your services to this town and our district. I certainly wish you much success in your retirement, and whatever your endeavors are, just have fun and enjoy yourself. With that said, we all know that the superintendent is a very, very important part of our district. I want to address comments in the newspaper this week stating the superintendent retiring was a catastrophic event. A catastrophic event is an event we saw down in Florida. That's catastrophic, okay? This is a professional retiring by choice, by choice. Catastrophic needs to be used in a better meaning. And I don't appreciate the gesture, Mr. Gorsky.
You're looking at me? You're slurking at me?
No, you have no respect for the public.
All right, please.
I've had respect, and I've listened to you for a long time.
Mr. Gorsky, please.
Don't address me. Address the chair.
Point of order is taken.
Thank you, President Arminio. Madam President.
Please, yeah.
Monroe has many exceptional staff. I have full faith that this district, led by our Board of Education President, Madam Arminio, Madam President Arminio, will continue moving forward without skipping a beat. I'm requesting this board do what the previous board leadership refused to do. I feel strongly that inclusivity in this process is imperative. The new board needs to include all stakeholders in the process for hiring a new superintendent to lead our district, while the last process excluded everyone, including administrators, union reps, parent group leaders, et cetera. I implore that you do not conduct your search for a superintendent in secret, as was done in the past with the prior administration or prior board. Transparency is key to ensure that the entire community embraces our next superintendent with open arms. I plead for no more controversy. Only then will we be able to pass referendums and do what is truly right for the great residents of our township. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public wishes to speak? Sir, are you getting up to speak? Okay. I know, but you shouldn't respond.
Good evening. Adam Elias, address is 93 Old Church Road. Last month was my first time attending a Board of Education meeting. I sat through about four hours, listening to the procedures and the discussion going back and forth. Heard the talk about the iPad, the $83 and everything like that. Again, I didn't hear anything much about how much money this district is getting and why we're not getting enough money, given the diverse population of our township, between the adult communities, a lot of the new families coming in. I made it a point to say at the last meeting that I would like to see some precedence being put on actually hearing from the state representatives of this district. I hear tonight, again, hearing a lot of the same topics that were discussed at the last meeting. I'm going to be at every single meeting that I can go, because I am now a resident and a father of two, with a third on the way here in Monroe Township, and I want to see the future and the success of the schools here in Monroe, but I still hear nothing about any kind of an effort to get more money into this district. All I hear is about money that we need to save, a deficit. I mean, we shouldn't be talking about a deficit. We should be talking about how we're going to get more money into this district. Where are the people who are responsible for making those decisions? Where is Linda Greenstein? Where is Dan Benson? Where is Wayne DeAngelo? Why aren't we calling these people to speak at these meetings? Why are we waiting until November after another election to talk to these people? These are the people that will decide how much money every resident in this room, we're paying what, 85, 86% of the school budget, when other towns are paying about 20%? Jamesburg is getting how much money out of the state, and how much money are we getting? My parents just moved in here last summer from Edison. We grew up in Edison. I told them, "You've got to get out of Edison. We don't live there anymore. We're paying too much for those tax-paying dollars going to schools that your kids no longer are attending." I brought them here into Monroe Township. My father's calling me every week, saying, "What's going on in Monroe? I thought you said the taxes were going to be cheaper here. What's happening here?" He's living in an adult community, paying HOA fees, and paying almost $6,000 a year in property taxes. That's not fair. I'm tired of hearing people talk about retiring, going down to Florida, because they can't afford to live here. For the longest time, my father said, "Where do you want me to go? Where am I going to go?" I said, "Come to Monroe." How are we supporting our communities here when we're not fighting hard enough to get more money for our schools? We're talking about iPads? We need another middle school. We actually have a critical need for money in this township, and we're not doing anything about it but fighting. I am so sorry to see you leave. I read the letter that you wrote in March to the legislature, and I saw that you were actually making a concerted effort to identify the problems here in Monroe Township and why we don't have enough money. I hope whoever fills your seat makes more of that effort. I hope I don't have to wait four or five months to hear Linda Greenstein, Dan Benson, and Wayne DeAngelo come to a Board of Education meeting and explain why they're not fighting hard enough for this township to get more money for our children. I don't hear enough anybody talking about children. I hear a lot of bickering and chattering, and I agree, a lot of silly social media rhetoric. Enough already. Let's act like adults. Let's get some money for this township. Let's get some money for our taxpayers. People are coming into Monroe Township by the droves. Let's give them a good reason to come here and to stay here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Ratner, 2 Kings Court. I hope that everybody's doing well and having an enjoyable summer. I would like to thank Dr. Alvik for her many years of hard work and dedication to our district. I know my husband, as well as several other teachers, have enjoyed working with her, whether at Brookside as a principal, as a superintendent, or in another fashion. Speaking as a former teacher, I can tell you there's no greater compliment than when the teachers that a principal or administrator is responsible for appreciate and respect her. I wish you a wonderful retirement with significantly less stress than you and all of us have had to deal with while leading our district through a pandemic over the past two years. I would like to address the public and state just that without speaking directly to someone who is retiring and knowing their reasons for retiring, it is wrong to just assume and jump to conclusions. Speaking specifically to those who say that nobody would ever retire with three years left in the middle of their contract, I can assure you that this is not the case. Not even looking at other districts where several other administrators have retired in the middle of the year, look back at our own previous board minutes. Are you to tell me that all of those teachers and administrators who retire from the months of October through May are not doing that in the middle of their contract? I do ask that instead of making this a political problem, wish Dr. Alvik a well-deserved retirement and honor her by trying to continue the work she has done during her valued time in the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Katie Fabiano, 19, Patricia Place. I just want to start off by thanking Dr. Alvik for her years of service here in Monroe. I'm an educator myself in another nearby district, so I know very well how difficult this past school year has been for administrators, staff, but most especially our students, and I think that that's who we need to remember the most right now, is it's not about us, it's about our kids. So, Dr. Alvik, I know that you have more than earned your retirement, and I do want to wish you all the best. Now I want to ask the board, what will the search for a new superintendent look like going forward from here? Are we going to bring in an outside consulting firm? Is there going to be input from the community? Will you form a committee to get input? It's concerning the fact that Monroe has had six superintendents in the past 12 years. I read the article that stated that Dr. Alvik's retirement is a catastrophic loss, and while anyone's retirement is a loss to any district, what is catastrophic is that we're not able to maintain leadership here in Monroe. And I think we have to ask ourselves why that is. Why are we not able to maintain quality leadership here, and how do you think we can fix that? How can we come together as a community to fix it? I think we need to stop the online chatter and figure out how it is that we are going to make this a better district, that the best district that I think we all know that we have the potential to be. Not maintaining leadership has been an issue way before this board has been seated, and I don't think that it's fair that it keeps being brought up that this board has to fix everything and only their six months on term, but now it's your job to repair it. So, we need to keep in mind that Monroe is a district that is more complicated than a lot of our neighboring towns. We have pressing needs due to overcrowding, lack of fair funding, and, you know, other things. But I am hopeful that the next superintendent will have the knowledge and ability to address these issues and lead Monroe to the strong and successful district that I know that it can become.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Okay, we will close the public portion. The next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Will there be a report at all?
I've incorporated some of the things that were occurring in my report, but Dr. Lehman will share more about some of the clubs and things next time.
Next time. Okay, so Dr. Lehman isn't here, so we will have Dr. Alvik's report and recommendation, please.
Okay, so we had a district restart committee held on July 15th, as we planned for the reopening in September. The district is following the NJ DOE and DOH, Department of Ed and Department of Health, the Road Forward Health and Safety Guidance for the 2021-2022 school year. That document is available on our district website under the restart page for everyone. There are five sections to this document. General Health and Safety Guidelines, Cleansing, Disinfecting and Airflow, Screening, Exclusion, and Response to Symptomatic Students and Staff, Contact Tracing, and Testing. So, the committee reviewed the progress for each section and offered feedback to the district. I did share out with the families in the Friday update some of the updates that we did talk about, but everything is really still under consideration as we move towards September and as we await further guidance. One of the big discussions that we did have was the new document does not require the six feet of social distancing. Classroom distancing or any distancing throughout the schools, it's recommended that it's three feet as much as possible. Still looking at keeping desks in rows, avoiding grouping students for a long period of time close together. I know that that's difficult, especially for our younger students, but if we do that, then we can utilize some partitions. Maintaining cohorts as much as possible and not using the locker rooms for PE classes. Students should come to school for PE, dress for PE. We did talk a lot about meals and making sure that we're spreading out in our cafeterias as much as possible. School administrations are looking at changing some of the schedules and working with the school meals, our Metz Culinary Services, to try to identify different schedules for students, so that we have less students in the cafeteria at a time. And again, keeping classes together as a cohort in the lunchroom and at recess, so that, to help with the contact tracing piece of it. High school is looking at alternate schedules, possibly adding a lunch. Middle school, keeping the teams together of students at lunches. And the other piece that was good news for all of our families is there will be no cost for lunches for the entire school year, and this is because of federal funding for all schools. So, if students get a full lunch, there is no cost. We do still have to have students put in their number and identify students, because we have to track that information, so that we get reimbursed from the federal government for that. There will be limited à la carte at the middle school, high school, and the elementary school, so that will have to be paid for. But a full lunch will be free to all students for the school year. Students can still bring their own lunch if they don't want to eat school lunch, but it will be there. There will be fewer lunch options each day, because we need to make sure that it's not something that's a self-service type of thing. It's going to be kind of a grab-and-go, everything together on the same tray, and the students get their lunches. Just trying to go through quickly some of the things. One of the things we did talk about also is what happens when we do have to have students that quarantine, and we'll be working with the teachers' union to have these discussions, but really identifying possible home instruction, virtual home instruction for students who need to quarantine, and that would happen after school hours. And looking at that across the grade levels and identifying how we would make that work. So, that's something that we're working on right now, is the schedule for that. And, you know, and obviously, we're still kind of tracking all of the guidance, and we will update more as we go through. There will be another meeting in August, and more information will be shared with all of the whole school community as we get final plans for September. On Monday, Kyle Anderson, who is the Middlesex County Superintendent, visited our district to tour our summer programs. Mr. Maralda, Ms. Ruel, and I shared the great work that's occurring across our summer programs, and he visited many of the classes at the high school. He praised the district on the offerings for our students. Turning to the agenda this evening, enrollment figures for June are found in the superintendent's section. As of the last day of school in June, there were 253 students from Jamesburg. We have four retirements on the agenda this evening. Mr. Ron Herrick, health and PE teacher at the Monroe Township High School. Ron has been with our district for 29 years. He will be retiring as of September 1st. Mrs. Maureen Sutter, L. Learning Consultant at Barclaybrook School for 28 years, is retiring on November 1st. And Mrs. Donna Barringer, paraprofessional at Brookside School, who's worked in the district for 19 and a half years, is retiring November 1st. I'd like to wish each of them a long and healthy retirement, and thank them each for their years of service to our students. Also, on tonight's agenda is my intention to retire on November 1st. I am honored to have served the district for the past 17 years, and I am proud of what we have accomplished, and I wish the staff and the families all the best, and I am sure that this district will continue to grow and excel. The district administration is actively recruiting and interviewing for all open positions, so you see many candidates on the board agenda this evening for hire. So, with that, it is recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through BD by roll call.
I have a question.
Well, we have to...
Well, we have to move it first and then second. So, would someone like to move it?
I'll move it.
Mr. Rutske?
I'll second.
Okay, now we can open it, yes.
Did Ms. Segal hold her hand up?
Go ahead.
Could you have a question?
So, just, Dory, I wanted to just share something with you, but it's extremely disheartening to see your retirement on the agenda tonight. An education leader with your caliber and passion for students and staff is not easy to come by. In the past 12 years that I've known you, we've had several superintendents come through this district. And through all that change, what the public may not be aware of is that you were the constant for the students and staff, keeping things moving ahead in curriculum despite the constant changes in leadership around you. You kept the children safe so they could continue to learn and grow. Despite our building space issues, you have worked with your teams to come up with creative solutions which have the least impact on programs and services. You have been a mentor to so many inside and outside of the school district. I've said this before at past meetings, the majority of the principals and vice principals in our schools have all been mentored by you. You've led by example, continuing your professional development so you can pass down the learnings to your team and enhance curriculums. You support your staff and have created an environment where people feel comfortable to share their ideas. When I look back at 12 years that I have known you, the list of outstanding accomplishments is very long, but I have to share a few. Staff PD programs that other school districts tried to mirror, whole child implementation for our students, staff, the unified programs. I know other districts want to be able to mirror us in those. Advancements in AP curriculum, CTE, arts curriculum, et cetera. The list goes on and on. Many people are still moving into Monroe for these excellent schools. This pandemic has added a whole level to your role, and you have handled it with grace following policy procedure to keep our students, staff, and the whole community safe. No leader has ever had 100% consensus on decisions that have been made. Leaders make decisions and they stand by them, even if they are not favorable. So, I am truly honored and proud to have had the opportunity to work and collaborate with you over the last 12 years as a parent in your school, PTA president, and now board member. The township of Monroe is losing an excellent educational leader. I wish you the best in your retirement. You have earned it, and I thank you for all that you've done for all the students and this community in our school district. Can I just give her a hug?
Congratulations.
Mr. Rutske, did you know? Anybody else? Mr. Tofano?
Dr. Alvik, I want to thank you for your commitment to our students and the staff here. And I just want to know, will you be angry at me if I vote no for you to retire? Or can we still be friends? Because I want to vote no for you to retire.
Thank you.
I'll take her retirement.
I'll wait. Ms. Belko is next, and then Mr. Polari.
I'm going to make a motion, so if you want to talk to him.
Oh, okay. No, this is discussion right now. If you want to discuss it.
Yeah, Madam President, I agree with Mr. Tofano, and I've been looking for the last five minutes to see where her resignation is on the agenda, and I'm not seeing it unless...
It's A.
What's the number?
A.
A is not yours. I mean, maybe I have an...
Under personnel.
That's what I'm looking at.
It was updated because it was added on Monday.
All right. So, that's what the problem is. So, I've been looking for it, and I apologize for not seeing. I do agree with Peter Tofano. I'm going to vote no on it too. So, let's pretend that you are retiring. That's what we're going to call it. Moving forward, when people leave, we're going to call them retirement, and I'm okay with that. But I tell you that you've been a true professional. I did not have a written or prepared speech. I'm going to speak from what my heart and what I feel about it. I think this district has been fortunate to have you for 15 years, and you are the first female to become a superintendent of schools in Monroe for the first time. We're proud of you for accomplishing that. And what makes it even more difficult is that it's not like we hired you. You grew through the ranks over the last 15 years. For you to decide with three years of contract, it speaks volumes about how difficult things have been for you. I'm not blaming anybody. I think the system itself was difficult for you. I have seen the emails we received from parents asking you to open up the schools. I have seen parents write emails to you saying, "Close the schools." I know the kind of things that you've been put through. And I got to tell you, irrespective of how people behaved, said things about you, you are a better person than I am because I do get emotional. And I'll learn that from you. But what concerns me the most is that there's a lot of people in this school district who care deeply about you and the leadership that you provided. And I'm really concerned that when the leader leaves, somebody made the reference to a corporate world, people tend to follow the leader. And I'm really concerned about who's going to be the next leaving this school district. We already had a good attorney leave, but we are in a situation where we're still finding one. And certainly, I share as a parent, somebody who asked the question on the board, is this good for the kids? It is not good for the, like Peter said, it's not good for the kids that you're leaving, so I'm going to vote no against it. And one thing that we tried to do last year was to bring the stability, Mrs. Fabiano, Mrs., I'm sorry, I forgot the last name, but she brought up, that's a very good point, that if you don't have a stable leadership at the helm of an educational institution, it's really not stable, and programs can flourish. But I think you have done a tremendous job. I don't want to take too much of your time. I think I already did. I apologize for that, but I do feel that we're going to miss you. We're going to miss your leadership. And whatever this retirement brings you, I wish you all the best. No hugs, just best wishes. Thank you.
Mr. Rutske?
Well, I'm going to just echo everybody's thoughts, but I'm going to just throw in a thank you very much from the Jamesburg District and community because you, as I've been on the board, and you've been really integral in merging some of the professional development, sharing curriculum ideas, both as an assistant superintendent now as a superintendent. We've had some changes over there. You've seamlessly worked with everybody along the way, and I just wanted to say thank you very much, and I do wish you the best in retirement.
Thank you. Dr. Alvik, I'll speak for myself and hopefully for the board in general. We thank you for your opportunity, and I think Peter, Tofano, and Mr. Polari would like to give you an opportunity to rescind your resolution. So, you can do that if you'd like. But leadership in terms of your presence in the community is appreciated. And despite what some people say, I think that Dr. Alvik has put enough things in motion that the 1,200 staff members that she was superintendent to will be able to carry on and continue Monroe's activity and be responsive to our students. But for your part in keeping Monroe through this pandemic and everything, I thank you certainly very much. And you and I, I didn't have the relationship that you had with Rupa, but certainly in this last six months, I think you and I have communicated nicely, and I appreciate that opportunity as well. So, I wish you the best of good health and good luck. Thank you. Ms. Belko, shall we?
Yes. Dr. Alvik, I did all of those sentiments, but I'm going to move on to a different section of this personnel report. And I'm going to go back to the concerns made by the co-leaders and the leaders of the CPAG organization. They have some very good concerns. The CPAG is a state mandated organization, and it is required that the district work with that state mandated organization. And then I was struck really by the presentation of our strategic plan, and goal number four talks about community engagement and that the Monroe Township School District strives to create strong partnerships with our diverse community. And that includes all of our community, including those of us with special needs students in our district. So, at this time, I would like to move to table item BA of the report for personnel to go back and review with the Personnel Committee and yourself, the recommendations that were made, and take into consideration the committee discussions that we have been for the original interview.
So, since there is something on the table, that has to be voted on an up or down vote?
Correct. No discussion, just an up or down vote.
Mr. Gorski, would you please call the roll?
Motion to table item BA from the superintendent's personnel report. Moved by Ms. Belko, seconded by Ms. Bierman. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky? Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Madam President?
Did you get Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sorry.
How do you vote, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Motion to table passes. So, that would revise the motion on the floor to exclude item BA.
So, then, Dr. Alvik, just want to just repeat that excluding BA.
It's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through BD with the exclusion of BA.
And since there was a motion in second, can we move, or do we need another motion?
No, you don't need another motion. It's been part of a table. The rest is subject to a vote.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Gorski, please.
Again, this motion is for Personnel Action Items A through BD with the exception of BA. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes to everything except A.
Where you vote?
No on A.
No on A, so noted. Mr. Rutske?
No on A, yes to everything else.
Madam President, permission just to remind the members for this motion to pass, you need five affirmative votes.
Okay.
Ms. Segal?
I'm voting no on A and yes for everything else.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
I'm going to vote yes on everything because I don't want Dory to get violent with me.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And moving on to Board Action, it's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through M as in Mary.
Can I have a first?
Summued.
Mr. Polari?
Second.
Ms. Bierman? Any discussion, any questions? Roll call, please.
Beg your pardon, I was turning the page. This was, motion was moved by...
Mr. Polari, seconded by Ms. Bierman.
No discussion? We can have a roll call.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
I'm going to vote yes on everything because I don't want Dory to get violent with me.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And moving on to Board Action, it's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through M as in Mary.
Can I have a first?
Summued.
Mr. Polari?
Second.
Ms. Bierman? Any discussion, any questions? Roll call, please.
Beg your pardon, I was turning the page. This was, motion was moved by...
Mr. Polari, seconded by Ms. Bierman.
No discussion? We can have a roll call.
Hey, Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes on everything except Bylaw 0164.2. This is a first reading of that. I'd like to...
How do you vote on that bylaw, ma'am?
No.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And that concludes my report.
Okay. Mr. Gorski, you're next. But before we go, shall, I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting that I don't know if anyone is ready to, I have to get some of our people back, make a motion. We can have either, well, we'll have a motion to hire, that will be L. Would that be appropriate? Or you want, how do you want?
There's two options I'd like to suggest. The first is I could go through Board Action Items A through K, and I could give the members of the board a time to think about this and get their answer vote ready.
Okay.
Or you could put that motion for the auditing services firm on the table now, and we could address that through deliberation first, whatever you prefer.
How about we vote on what's on and then separate L because that will be a motion to hire? And we'll have that discussion, and it'll either be yes or no if you're ready.
Why can't we just discuss L so we can vote on...
Well, whatever the board prefers.
It doesn't matter to me. It doesn't matter.
Do you have a suggestion?
I think you go through the agenda, act on it, and then deliberate on the professional separately.
Do you mind?
That's fine.
Okay. So, let's go through Mr. Gorski's agenda. He might need to say, did you want to say anything about it? Anything on the agenda, Mr. Gorski?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through K be approved by consent roll call. Need a motion and a second, please.
Summued.
Ms. Belko, Mr. Tofano.
Any questions? Or...
Is the Oculus on this one?
Yes.
Yes, it's K.
Okay, I see it. Okay, I just want, and I did go through it originally, but I just want to be clear, since this K is going to, it's a security risk assessment for the district's IT infrastructure, they're going to have access to our, all of our documents and records. Do we have a, do they have, are they bonded? Do we have a confidentiality agreement and all that stuff with them? I just want to make sure that we're good there.
The assurance is there, but I do not believe they will have access to sensitive data. They're looking more at the infrastructure and the files themselves without going into the level of detail that's in there. I will make certain of that with Mr. Feldman because I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. When I read it, I thought that they would really have access to everything that is on our computer system, and I just want to be clear that our private student records and staff records are covered.
Noted.
Okay. So, can we vote on that with that contingency?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how would we structure that?
If the mover and seconder consent, you can simply add that language to K. That's a friendly amendment.
Who was that? Ms. Belko and Mr. Tofano?
Please add the language.
Yes, you agree?
I agree, that's fine.
Mr. Tofano, did you second that motion?
Yes, I did.
May we put that, may we insert that in that resolution?
Yeah.
Okay. I think Mr. Gorski, then we make proceed.
Very good, very good. So, we'll proceed with a vote. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
And Madam President?
Yes. Thank you.
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, Business Administrator Report Action Items A through K has been approved by consent roll call. And before I finish my report, I would just like to say something germane to the previous agenda item for personnel, although it does affect the Business Administrator's Report greatly, and that's the interaction between the business office and the Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Alveg's extensive knowledge leading into expertise in the area of facilities, budget, child nutrition, student transportation, especially curriculum instruction, and district leadership touches all the areas of everything I've ever presented in a Business Administrator's Report. Many of these areas report to me, and they needn't while you were here, Dr. Alveg, because they could go directly to you and you spoke the same language with them. I have never worked with a Superintendent of Schools who had such an extensive knowledge of the budget, even down to account number, where items are, and especially recommending to the taxpaying members of this community, how we can save money and be more efficient. That's something that is usually overlooked at the Superintendent level because of the rush to get the budget done in time and the preparation of the slides, and maybe it hasn't even been addressed at all. But I will tell you that from the preliminary budgets to the final adoption, it was like you were a member of my office working with there, and there was no disconnect on any issue. Again, facilities, budget, child nutrition, transportation, curriculum instruction, and especially leadership, Dr. Alveg, you are the very best of the best, in my opinion. And I've been here long enough that I think I can make that. And a loss of such a person that has that kind of expertise, that is homegrown in this district for eighteen years, that knows every facet of every angle of this diamond that you call your school district, is in fact catastrophic. And I will defend the use of that word, because it, in my opinion, you will not find an equal who will cover the gamut that I just discussed. Dr. Alveg, it has been a pleasure working with you. You are an inspiration, you have been a mentor to me in many ways, even financial, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I wish circumstances were different, that could change your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes my report. Thank you for giving me the time.
You're welcome, but we still have L.
Oh, well, that's for the Board to, somebody to move and deliberate on.
Someone has to move a resolution?
It's not gonna be L, because it's not part of the consent agenda.
Oh, it's not, okay, so we'll just have a new resolution?
Right.
Would someone like to move to, I don't know if anyone has a strong feeling about any of the auditors?
We have to make a resolution to discuss?
Yeah, in order to discuss.
I thought we were gonna discuss, we didn't need a resolution.
Can we discuss it without?
You're the Chair.
Well, we had three, and we have to deliberate in public.
Right, so the question is, can you deliberate without someone putting forth a name?
Yeah.
And the answer is, as long as it's okay with you, then it's okay.
Is that acceptable to everybody?
Wait, how are we gonna deliberate without putting forth a name? We have to make a...
Meaning that you don't have to make a formal motion in order to have the discussion that you want to have.
Oh.
You can make the motion, but you don't have to in order for people to discuss the candidates they liked or didn't like.
So let's discuss it, and then if we come to some consensus about a particular one, we'll make a motion to hire that one. Would anyone like to begin? Does anyone have a feeling about, we do have to have an auditor, and we would like to get them, you know?
So I'm not to say names now?
No, you can.
Now you can't say, we're just not making a motion yet.
All right, right, so, I'm sorry, can I go first?
Yes, please.
Okay, so...
Mr. Tofano?
I learned tonight that in the accounting field...
Use your mic, please, we can't hear you.
What do you want me to do, put it up my nose? I learned tonight from all three accounting firms that it is a good idea to have fresh eyes review when it comes to accounting. So, I, although I think Mr. Stankowitz, and I appreciate him coming here again, I think the original reason why we wanted a new auditor was because we wanted a set of fresh eyes. And all three professionals tonight, I asked the same question, and they all confirmed that it's a regular practice to have fresh eyes. So, I am, me personally, I am leaning towards, I mean, I think John Perry had a really good presentation tonight, but I am leaning towards the FHA.
HFA?
Okay.
HFA, correct. I liked their presentation, I thought they brought, went out of their way to bring three representatives and a great demonstration on video, and I think that's the way I would lean, to FHA.
HFA.
Anyone else?
I agree with that one.
Ms. Belko?
I happen to agree with Mr. Tofano, I think that the group FA, HFA, wow, that's really hard. HFA, yes, they did a great presentation, I did spend some time reviewing these documents prior to tonight, and I also felt the both, the second two interviewers did provide us with their plan, and their, you know, very detailed plan from this organization. Mr. Jump's organization, I don't, I didn't feel, I didn't get the feel from them that they had the bandwidth to be able to handle what we were doing. So I do recommend that we go with the Holmes, Frenia, and Allison.
Okay, that's two. Ms. Skirby?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Tofano and Ms. Belko. The one thing that stuck out for me was, you know, out of college, I had worked for Arthur Andersen, and they were one of the big six accounting firms, and their structure of having partner-manager engagement, you know, somebody in charge of that engagement, they seemed to be set up like that. And that did stick out to me, that they have three individuals assigned to their client, and then they do have auditors underneath that. So that did stick out to me. I thought, you know, the other company, Jump Perry, they also had, it sounded like they had more staff than the previous auditor we used, but again, they seemed much smaller. I did like the explanation they gave for how they're using, you know, how they addressed issues during the pandemic with being able to be remote, and their concerns with not wanting to be in the office as much as possible, you know, getting things done as quick as possible to not make staff feel uncomfortable, that they're there often. So I liked a lot of what they had to say, and that would be my recommendation.
Mr., do you want to go down the line, Mr. Nikotinsky?
Well, what I learned tonight is that if we got a new auditor, it wouldn't cost us more money, like we were told. So my pick is HFA.
Mr. Plori, would you like to comment?
No problem.
Ms. Bierman?
I agree with the making a change in auditing services, certainly we heard that a lot in the past year at the podium from the public also. So I support that change. I'm a little torn between Jump Perry and HFA concerning, HFA seemed a little bit bigger to me and probably more capable to handle the district our size. Jump Perry, though, a little bit more intimate, and maybe better service would come from there, but I'd be a little bit concerned about, as Katie said, the bandwidth to be able to handle a district our size, since they only had one other in their references that was close. So, I guess in the next few minutes, I'll land on one or the other, but I do support making the change.
Mr. Rutske, would you care to comment?
Sure, why not? I would be remiss if I didn't say, I don't see a dramatic need for a change, I don't know where the public would stand with regards to needing an auditor change, when most of the public has no idea what an auditor does and/or what that service is, with all due respect. We're back to my argument of micromanaging the district and not letting the district run officially. With that said, sometimes change is good, and so I'm not here to fight against that. I would say, yes, it looks like Hoffman, HFA, looks like a discount, I actually respect that they're raising their rate each of the next two years. That's realistic, they need to make money. Where it goes from there, I guess, is anybody's guess. Whether or not to the other Board members comment, whether or not there are incidentals throughout the year or next three years will remain to be seen, but at face value, it looks like there's slight discount. You're talking about $7,000, that's, seems like an awful lot, but yet we're giving $204,000 of iPad money back to the public. So yet we're saving $7,000. We're still losing money on our budget throughout this meeting, so just be clear about that. I just don't want to get too excited about $7,000, that's all. Because, again, we don't know that it's really gonna be $7,000 when all is said and done. With that said, I think I would choose HFA over, obviously, we're not going with Samuel Klein, and I would take HFA over Jump Perry, is where I land.
Yeah, I share some of the same sentiments that others said. I have HFA as my number one, as I was ranking, it was between them and Jump Perry, so I would go with HFA.
Has anybody not spoken that cares too? All right, actually, the only, what Ms. Skirby liked about HFA is what I didn't like, but maybe I'm old fashioned, I do like boots on the ground, and sometimes I think, even though we don't want to have always cozy relationships, but I do think inside an organization in order, especially for the first year, you might want to be in the organization to review it. But having said that, I'm sort of in between both as well, like Ms. Segal, so I will concede to the consensus of the group. I thought they were both, if we were eliminating Mr. Stankowitz's firm, then I would, I think both had merit, so I don't think we would be getting, we would be having a problem with either. So, you know, however the Board wishes at this point, I don't have a particular position.
Madam President, would it be appropriate for me to ask the Business Administrator and maybe the Superintendent, given that they will have to work with the firm on if they have a preference, if they can't answer that, or you don't want them to answer, are they comfortable with whoever the consensus is saying it is? Just want to make sure that we're not just hiring somebody because they put in a proposal, they're truly qualified, they can do the job, they're gonna be available and comfortable to work with.
Before I grant that, I just, you know, the Board is, the Board hires the accounting firm, I mean, I'm sorry, the auditor, and it might be perceived as a conflict of interest if Mr. Gorski, or any Business Administrator chooses or makes a recommendation because they will be auditing the Business Administrator. I think if the Board agrees, I have no problem with Mr. Gorski making a statement, but he doesn't, he really doesn't have a vote, and we should be careful about influence, but...
I just asked it under the guise of something that we heard from CPAC, that, you know, we give a suggestion, you don't hire, so want to make sure that eventually, whether some officers are on the board or not, the Administrator and the Superintendent is comfortable working with them.
Is anyone uncomfortable with that?
Yes, I am. I am uncomfortable with that.
Okay, then, well, okay, then I will, I think we should just move on. If someone wants to make a motion, we'll have a roll call.
I'd like to make a motion that this Board of Education accept the RFP from Holman, Frenia, Allison PC Organization as presented to us in documents sent out last week, as well as tonight's presentation.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Bierman, I think seconded it first. Will we have a roll call, please, Mr. Gorski?
He's Chair.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Plori?
I vote yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Ms. Segal?
Yes.
Ms. Skirby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Would it be appropriate, who needs to contact them tomorrow? Would that be?
It's Mr. Gorski's office.
Mr. Gorski?
We talked about that before, that you said there was a role of the Board Secretary Business Administrator.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if that's the role of the Board, that should be your call.
Yes, that's fine. That's fine, Mr. Gorski. Could you put my name on it, and if I have to come in and sign anything, or just CC us and then the full Board?
Put your name on the letter, do you wish to come in and sign it?
If I have, no, you could just put my name on the letter.
Okay.
If the Board...
We're sending three letters, right? Two, no thank you, and one.
Yes, of course, thank everybody for their participation and the one.
Madam President, typically, when an RFP is seeked by an individual, the result of the RFP is communicated by the person who's seeking the RFP.
The result is...
That's typical in the industry.
So the...
Whoever asks for the proposal from the auditing firms is the person who communicates with them what the result of their RFP is.
Well, the RFPs went through the Board Secretary and the Business Administrator. So, under that, I'd be happy to have Mr. Gorski write, on behalf of the Board.
Yeah, on behalf of the Board, yes.
But if you wish to co-sign the letter, I certainly have no objection.
Nope, that's fine, it's not necessary.
Okay, so I will be the only signature on the letter?
Yes, sir.
It's okay. Very good.
Next, are we going with your report? My report. I think the only thing I would like to say moving forward, and we've all talked about our appreciation for Dr. Alveg, and I would like to tell the staff of this district, this wonderful district, despite the tensions and despite some of the things that tend to go on, I have full confidence in the staff to continue on the work that they do, and I implore everyone to be very cognizant of that our job is to protect our students and to educate them. And I'd like that to be the theme from moving on. Of course, the referendum is something we have to do to house our students, but I think I'd like to reaffirm our commitment to education, to academics, and to the intellectual development of all of our students. All of our principals, vice principals, you know, right down to everyone who helps keep our buildings clean, our bus drivers, I ask that, and I'm sure everyone will maintain the quality of the work that they have shown all along. And again, I thank Dr. Alveg for her contribution to that, and I am grateful for the staff to continue to move on. Having said that, I, since this has really just happened, I think I'm going to suggest to the Board that we have a special meeting before the next August meeting, and we can talk about what the agenda is, but we will have to talk about an interim, or going out for our Superintendent, or doing both, but I want it to be the full Board discussion. It will be done in closed session. I'm gonna ask Mr. Gagliardo to talk about it, and we talked about public participation, and we have to do that in a way, however, that respects our ability and our confidentiality in terms of our ethics. So, there is a fine line between what we can have the public participate in, and what has to be done behind closed doors and closed session, because people who are applying, or perhaps applying for the job, may not want that information to be out, and we are a little bit leaky in this community. And I know there are already speculations, and I want to assure everyone in the public that nothing has been decided, nothing has been discussed, and I think we need the whole Board to come together and have, and begin that discussion as soon as possible, for the sake of our children. And that would be my report. Mr. Gagliardo, if you want to sort of describe what the public can and cannot participate in, in terms of confidentiality.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly, I've been counselled to Boards who have had members of the public participate on the selection committee, but that's generally after you get to a certain phase, because the members of the Board here have taken an oath and under an ethical obligation to maintain the confidentiality of the applicants. And that's really the issue that you have, is if you were to tell applicants who have positions in other districts, that members of the public are gonna become aware that they've applied from the outset, first of all, I've never seen that done, and second of all, were you to do that, you will limit the candidate pool, because folks are not gonna want to take the chance, their names are gonna leak, when the folks for whom they work don't know that they're looking for a job. But as part of the process, you let folks know, depending on how you choose to handle it, that were they to become semifinalists or finalists, there will be a broader committee that may include members of the faculty, parents, concerned citizens, et cetera, so that folks know that if they reach that level, that that may happen, and they can make a decision, but of course, at that point, the decision they're making is, okay, well, I know I'm one of two or three finalists or semifinalists. And so in those circumstances, people, again, in my experience, typically are then willing to have their names revealed, and may have even decided at that point to share it with the folks for whom they work. So it is sort of a delicate balance, including the public in a position, the selection of a position as important as the Superintendent is not unusual, but it is unusual to do it from the outset, and it will impact how well you are able to cast a wide net.
Okay. Having said that, I guess it will be my responsibility to reach out to everyone, and we'll decide, I know people have vacations and things like that, it's still summer, and I would be happy to get feedback as to when we can do this as soon as possible, and maybe we'll put something else on the agenda, we'll maybe talk about the referendum, something like that. But again, I'd like feedback from everybody. I want to be as inclusive as possible, okay? I think then we can go to new Board business, would anyone like to? Ms. Bierman?
I'd like to thank Dr. Alveg for her years of service in Monroe, and sincerely wish her well in all future endeavors. I was upset to see my... I was upset to see a mycentraljersey.com headline and article circulating on our local social media pages yesterday, and particularly upset at the chaos and hysteria that ensued in comments and conversations by community members. The headline referenced a catastrophic loss. I'm sure the intention was to compliment Dr. Alvik, however, it was done in a way that deliberately created a vacuum of fear and angst, divisiveness. These sentiments are neither necessary or appropriate. This is not a catastrophic event for our district. Another quote says, finding a competent superintendent has become extremely difficult. More fear that we will be left with no one competent at the helm to make decisions, especially during a trying time as we still navigate the post-pandemic climate. Surely, we can recognize that we have a very deep bench of highly qualified professionals in our district. I think it is important to keep the announcement of a retirement in its proper perspective and look forward to the opportunity it brings to us in finding a successor. We should all be banding together in this mission of attracting leadership that will propel us forward instead of undermining that cause. We do not want unwarranted chaos and hysteria in our district. We cannot accept a theme of doom and catastrophe. Change is not necessarily easy, but it is always an opportunity to embrace continuous improvement and progression toward a better place. Thank you.
Anyone else? Other board education business?
May I?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam President. So I was just thinking about, crack that up just a little, I was just thinking about something that was discussed earlier tonight in, in one of the bylaws policies with regards to our meetings being either livestreamed or having remote access. And I have to say, one of the things, I, I keep trying to figure out what, what good came out of the pandemic, what bad came out of the pandemic, and I think one of the good things was, as much as I hated remote meetings, we had, I don't know, 150 to 200 people in our, so to speak, audience, and that was really great participation, and I think it really allowed so many more people to follow along, maybe share a thought, get involved. So I, I hope, and I know there's complications legally, but I hope there's a way we could find to do some sort of a hybrid meeting going forward where people from the public can be, stay involved and participate, I guess participate may be difficult, but at least stay involved and, and be part of the meeting. I just hope we can figure that out, that's all.
Well, perhaps we haven't mentioned it clearly, but we are live streaming now.
Oh, that was definitely not mentioned. This meeting right now is being livestreamed?
We're live streaming our board meetings and our committee meetings, but the public isn't able to participate through the webex.
Okay, so that is progress.
And that was part of the, we're trying to wait and see what happens, and since the state of emergency has ended, are we allowed to allow them to participate remotely? But, but we are live streaming.
So we are live streaming, but they can't ask a question?
Yeah, that's the complication.
Okay, I did not know that. That's, so that's, I guess, sort of good news.
Again, new testing and new things going on, sorry.
Madam President?
Ms. Segal was first.
Just a question along those lines. So, since we are now livestreaming the committee meetings, can a board member who is not present at the meeting listen in from home?
Again, I, I am not an expert, Ms.
Because now we are community members, we're not board members, right? At home, no? Okay, I was just curious.
No, the, and, and the, the word, I'm quite confident in the statute, is, there's a reference to gathering electronically, so that if you had people participating from home, it would constitute a quorum, because board business is being discussed and you have a quorum present, so you would not be able to do that.
You just said participating, no, what about just listening?
Just listening.
You would have a quorum present and board business would be discussed, and that's the distinction between having all of the board members at graduation and not having a meeting advertised. There is absolutely no doubt in my mind that if you had seven board members present but three promised not to say anything, and it wasn't advertised, that you would be violating the Open Public Meetings Act. There's zero doubt in my mind, and that's the difficulty posed with your question. So promising, I won't say anything, I'll just be present, and present, again, the word electronically is used, is absolutely a violation of the statute. That's the problem posed by that.
But that's in reference to the livestream. We would be able to watch the recording when it's posted several days later at our leisure and be informed.
Absolutely right. The, the question, as I understood it, was if there's a committee meeting, could we participate simply by listening during the course of the meeting? And the answer is yes, comma, unless a quorum is going to be present, then the answer is absolutely not.
And generally, in our committee meetings, we've had great attendance from all the board members, so they have sacrificed a great deal of time, and, and really, folks, even though the technology and the laws haven't quite caught up to each other, you know, in a democratic society, the, the participation of the public is key, and when we are all together regardless of electronic or in person, we, and we have more of a quorum, you know, we cannot exclude the public. So we have to take this very seriously, a very, very important document, the Open Public Meetings Act. Thank you. Anyone else, someone else had a question? Ms. Gerby, yes.
Yes. Just to Paul's comments, the policy committee did talk a lot about that, and I, I was one of the big proponents to continue using technology to livestream, because it is, you know, for years, you know, people have to get babysitters and you have tough schedules and you want to participate, you want to come, you want to be informed, you just can't make it. So I, I did speak out about it at the policy meeting, and it just needs to be really clear to the public that the board is not, we did not make any decision to exclude the public, we did not, we had to, if I'm correct, we had to go back to pre-pandemic procedures following Open Public Meetings Act, and until anything changes, the law, we're waiting for the law and the new statutes, if they come out and any changes are made, and then the board can make that decision. But we, the Board of Education, have not made any decisions to exclude the public or, or backtrack on, on, on any public participation. I myself voiced my opinion that I would be all for having the public to be able to access the meetings remotely. I think that would be, encourage public participation and community engagement.
I think most of us were for that.
Yes.
Yeah, I think just about it. We have evolved into, you know, again, to use the word transparency, we've evolved into exposing board business as much as possible to the public. The question becomes, and we've often said it, is how, how to have the, the public participate when we're, we're all in person? Is it, you know, is it fair to all the people who are sitting here now that are coming and, and, you know, taking their time to be present? So, again, it's an evolving technology conundrum. Anyone else? All right.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I, I've been contemplating whether to address this or not, but I do have a couple of points I would like to make. I think at least one or two people did bring up about the timeline. I don't know if it was March or April meeting. We as a board made a motion to request the administration to look in, I don't know if it was the architect or whoever it is, to come up with a, a timeline of a best-case scenario on a critical path method to kind of give us a timeline of what's going to happen. The matter of fact is that there is at least three of us on this board, two of them are contesting for a different position, so they may not be on, most likely I will not be on. So I, I think to make sure that we are accomplishing something to show to the community that we're not just sitting and twiddling our thumbs, we want to show that, I'm not expecting a referendum to come or a plan to be in place, but at least a timeline to tell them that this is reassuring that this is going to happen by this time. Is it going to happen as, as we say exactly? No, maybe six months plus or minus. I think that's important, and if I may request the administration and the board and the BGNT for that matter, can look into that and see if they can come up with a, a timeline by August?
Didn't we vote on one of those?
We did.
Yeah.
We did, but we haven't seen anything in like four months now, so that's what I'm saying.
That's on the administration. That's on the administration.
We have, we, we have the update, and again.
Madam President, I don't want to take up everybody's time on that, but one, one last item I want, I want to say is, individually, none of us are going to become heroes here by either attacking somebody or being attacked by someone. As a team, either we succeed as a board or we fail as a board, and for anybody from a public coming to attack us, you know, people don't understand whether they're attacking you as a board president, they're attacking me, right? They're attacking Paul or, or anyone else, they're attacking me, if, if a group of my team is being attacked. I think I humbly request that moving forward, when the public comes purely to attack board members, doesn't matter who it is, on which side it is, and make gestures, I think the control and the, and the kind of demeanor that we need to maintain in the meeting is extremely important, because I get sucked in by people saying that I posted a picture of mine, I never posted a picture of mine, but am I going to be quiet and let the people make these acquisitions and walk away with it? Unfortunately, that's been the case here, because tomorrow it's going to be on the Facebook. So I, I think we need to be respected. If I don't sit here and ask the questions I'm asking of Pete or anyone else for that matter when I'm asking a question, I'm not doing my job as an elected official to represent the people who elected me. Just because I'm asking the question, it doesn't mean that I'm against it. I was asking the policy, last year I tried to do things where the board president told me point blank, you cannot consult anybody, you have to go through the board administration. He came to my house to tell me that. As frustrating as it was, I said, okay, that's what it is, that's what it is. So I just want to put things in context here. When we walk away tonight, nobody's going to be a hero, nobody's going to be a villain here. If Peter or anybody else for that matter wants to reduce our taxes, God bless them, you know, 100%, vote for the guy who's going to reduce your taxes. So, thank you very much, sorry for going on on that.
So, so we've gone, we've gone over that, but let me just say, and I don't have it off the top of my head, but there is a lawsuit, and again, I will defer to Mr. Gagliardo, I believe it's Bressler versus West Windsor Plains Barrow, where a member of the public was censored for constantly repeating at every meeting, and I think the, the Board of Educat, we cannot stop someone based on the content of their speech, whether we like it or not. We should, I, I mean, I would ask the board members to be more controlled and courteous, but I will, I will not, unless someone is threatening or saying really foul and outrageous language, I will not have anyone censored, because again, participation of the public is key, it's our democratic right, and if someone gets a little hot under the collar, might not be my style, but we will, we will not censor anybody because we don't like what they say. It's against, I think it's against the Open Public Meetings Act.
So apparently during the pandemic, you've gotten so bored, you've taken to reading case law, Madam President, which is an extraordinary development, but, and fortunately, I would, I would feel very awkward if I didn't know the case you were talking about, but I do. Under the circumstances of father and daughter came to the podium to level some accusations at, I think it was the district's softball coach.
It was a sport, yes.
Yeah, and the, and the board president gavelled them down and said they weren't allowed to make those comments, and rather than challenge it as a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, they challenged it as a civil rights violation, and they won money damages against the school district. I believe it, it was a six-figure sum, quite a case, but a, a lesson to be learned about the sort of speech that you have to tolerate. Doesn't mean you can't rebut it, but it is a very awkward thing to be subjected to, to certain things, particularly if you're uncomfortable with whether or not they're even accurate, but that's what we tolerate in a free society, and as I believe the, the writers of the Federalist Papers referred to the marketplace of ideas, right? You're free to respond when they're done, but you're not free to tell them they can't speak.
And God for our constitution.
Could you, is it Bressler, Mr. Gagliardo?
I honestly don't remember the name of the plaintiff of the case, but thankfully, I knew the case.
That, that was the case. I haven't read the Federalist Papers in their entirety, but that sounds really exciting. All right. I think then we go to the public forum. May I have anyone in the public who wishes to speak? Yes. Yes.
Good evening, Michael Leskey, 50 Mayberry Avenue, Monroe Township. I just want to echo everyone else's comments about thanking you, Dr. Dory, for your leadership and honesty and good performance. Just want to let you know, I was always amazed how, and I'm not digging at you, Mike Gorski, but always amazed that anytime anybody had a question about something, you know, you never had a book that you had to refer to, you always had the answer right up here, and of course, it speaks for, you know, the knowledge you have of, of the district. But, I'm going to ask you a tough question, and it's just an honest question, not look at the point fingers or anything. Can you be of any help to us in understanding why you chose to retire? Or maybe it's a private matter, you're like, you'd rather keep it private. But, you know, I'm just kind of picturing, and, you know, I don't want social media to create stirs, but I'm picturing right now going forward, there are going to be a lot of people kind of, you know, wondering, no, doing more than wondering, putting some maybe false stories out there, and it might be beneficial actually for our entire school district to know maybe what came into play there. That's it. You say what you, you feel comfortable saying. Thank you.
This is the best decision for me and my family at this time.
Okay. Yep. Very nice. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Leskey.
Oh, and I just wanted to make maybe one other comment, too. Very happy to see the, the school district and maybe sometime down the road, our municipal government, pick up on, you know, the idea of actually getting, what, votes on different services and not staying with the same provider, service contractor, whatnot. We saw the benefit of that tonight, and maybe going forward, we'll see more of that, both within the district and also with the municipal government. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak?
Good evening, everybody.
Your name and address, please, sir.
Pradeep Malam, 4 Jake Place. First of all, congratulations in order for Dr. Alvik, and best of luck for your retirement. In today's agenda, I see we are paying board docs 17,500 and some amount. I urge and I request every committee member to upload the handouts to the board docs. We are paying the money, please use that. This is for the sake of the people that who want to follow the meeting. Please upload the, please upload the, the handout that being circulated, which is kind of public, because every member in the committee is going to refer to that one, and people are not looking at those same things. Okay? Second thing, minutes of meetings, they are not, not being updated in the committees, in the, in the board docs. Now, we are recording and we are livestreaming them, please put a link, just one step, one liner, after the meeting, once you publish the public URL, just put that link in the minutes of meeting, you don't need to write whole minutes of meeting, you just put one line link to there. Okay? This is my request. Regarding the auditing, I see like, there are so many companies and there are so many industries, they have a very strict regulations about like how an auditor choose and how long they can serve continuously for that particular reason. Okay? I request to look at the policy that can we change or can we rotate the auditors after certain X, X years of continuous service? Because that will avoid all the maybe questions and all those things will be cleared out. And I have another question regarding the policy, and any school-appointed official, if they are releasing a press note at his official capacity, does the board or the administration need to review, or does the person who is releasing the press note, does he need to take a prayer permission, what he is releasing to the press? I request to get the answers.
Can we take the last one first?
Yeah.
Mr. Malam? Releasing press, releasing information to the press or being interviewed by a reporter?
So, I don't know if you have an internal policy, most boards do, but individual administrators are not authorized to speak. are not authorized to speak for the board. So.
Not for the board, but at his capacity, like I'm a principal of a particular school. Can I release a press note on myself without my administration approval?
I would say no.
I'm a engineer in the school district.
The answer is no. You cannot.
Okay.
Everything would go through the office of the superintendent.
Now the question, now the main question comes. Does the press lead that is published by the Middlesex regarding the Dr. Alvich retirement is being approved by the administrative office?
Yes.
Thank you. That answers.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What's amazing to me is the concept of transparency applies to everything except what happened in this issue. Then we can't speak about it. Then it has to be silenced. I had the permission of the superintendent to address facts that were being inquired of the reporter, and I respected Dr. Alvich's wishes to keep it as sterile as possible.
Okay. I did send an email to Dr. Alvich after I had received some concerns about, actually, social media first, and I sent an email to Dr. Alvich asking if she allowed the interview, and she said yes. So I left it at that. I didn't pursue it at all. So through the superintendent, she can designate someone to talk to the media. I would imagine, you know, not just anybody, but through a designate. So that's fine. We've cleared that up. Yes, ma'am?
Hello again, this is Kate Ratner, 2 Kings Court. Ms. Arminio, recently, like within the past, I'd say half hour, you had mentioned that one of our goals is to make sure that our children are safe and taken care of. And that's actually the concern that I want to bring up, because there's actually an issue that happened this past school year, where obviously, as you guys all know, it was emotionally hard on our students. It was both academically hard, but also really emotionally. And children had to deal with being isolated from their relatives and their friends for, you know, a significant period of time, and it caused a lot of, you know, mental health concerns. And, you know, personally, and while it was not for a lengthy period of time, which I'm very grateful for, my typically very social nine-year-old daughter was one of those people who began to, you know, feel sad and isolated, and she felt disconnected from those people that she's always enjoyed spending time and communicating with. You know, so as a concerned parent, this was right around when hybrid learning was beginning, I reached out to the counselor at her school, and just for the sake, and this is not to point blame at any person in the district, so I just want that to, you know, be mentioned. But I wanted to see if there was a way that she either might be able to be pulled out for just an assessment to make sure everything was okay, or to be placed into perhaps like a small group counseling session where she can just discuss her feelings, you know, with other students who might be feeling the same way. So I reached out to the school administrator, and she had directed me to speak with the counselor. And what I was told is that because my daughter was excelling academically, my concerns regarding her emotional needs could not be addressed in a school setting. I have several problems with this. First of all, I think this is a very reactive way of thinking. I'm not really sure what the point is of waiting until a student's grades are beginning to suffer, you know, until they can receive help. I would much prefer to address the problem proactively, so it can be taken care of before it becomes a major concern. In addition, I can think of a number of high-achieving students who suffer from emotional distress, who deserve to have the same type of support as those students who are struggling academically. In fact, I'm sure many of you know that emotional concerns is a major reason why academics can begin to suffer. You know, as someone who has a master's in school counseling, I can tell you that the role of the American School Counseling Association states that the role of a school counselor or school counseling program is to address the academic, career, social, and emotional needs of all their students. And I really do find it inappropriate that all three aspects of this would only be addressed in a school if academics are an issue. Luckily, I happen to be an involved parent who understands some of what was going on and know some of the resources and was able to speak to my daughter. In addition, it was a very short-term problem. However, I'm particularly concerned about students in our community who might be suffering even more so, and have parents who may not be aware of these resources, or their children may not wish to talk to them, or might be struggling even more so. So I don't know if this was a specific school protocol, district protocol. I had reached out to several administrators in the district, both in counseling and just general about it, but I'm hoping this is something that might be able to be addressed for the future, because I really do think that it's important to bring up, you know, if a parent brings up emotional concerns for the child, the very least, it should be addressed and the child should be assessed by a professional in the school. That said, I also always try to mention a positive attribute with something negative, you know, it might be the teacher in me. But I do want to say that although it took some time to be implemented, the Falcon Family Wellness website that was created, I think is an amazing resource. It's excellent blend of mental health referrals and child activities, and I just want to say that I hope this website is continued to be spotlighted and emailed, perhaps not just to parents and people in school, but in the community as well, because I think everyone can benefit.
Thank you. And thank you for your time. Okay. Dr. Alvich, yes, please do.
So Ms. Ratner, I'd really appreciate if you could give me a call tomorrow, because I would like to hear more information about this, because that shouldn't be happening.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I even have like messages, emails that were sent about it, so I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
And Dr. Alvich, since it may not be an isolated situation, could you put that out to the principals and things like that? Just a notification that is not acceptable? I think we, you've made that clear throughout the year.
Yes, it's been very clear.
Okay. Anyone else, please? Rabbi, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
Your name and address again, please, sir.
261 Gravel Hill Road. Regarding the facilities. So when we first came here 20 years ago, the Board of Education had a policy that religious institutions that wanted to use the facility for a community project were able to do so without being charged a fee. Whether it was the Holocaust Remembrance Day, or a service for Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and other sorts of events like that. A couple of years ago, that changed, and we were notified that we're going to be charged by the hour, plus security fees, and an hour before, an hour after, have to deliver the books, fees an hour before, an hour after, with security fees, whether it was during school time, it wasn't during school time, if there was anybody in the building, if there was no one in the building. Needless to say, offering a community service for a nonprofit, it was very, very burdensome on us. And I just recently heard that this was something that the board perhaps wasn't aware of. Given COVID, obviously, we're hurting like every other nonprofit, community organization, and charity is hurting. We've been having outdoor services. There is a good chance that we'll start services again indoors, and hence need to make use of the facilities of the Board of Education. And I wanted to make a request, if it would be possible, at least for this year, to waive all of those vast fees, and maybe just have like a symbolic contribution to the Board of Ed of maybe like $500, whatever, for the use of the facilities for the holidays that are coming up in September.
I'm going to ask Mr. Gorski to, since he's in charge of that. But I know that things have changed over the years with the facilities, and I know that we have had to change the policy. So I know it is in the policy, but Mr. Gorski, there's a, please, if you will.
Good evening, Rabbi. It's been a while, good to see you again. I've been the business administrator for 12 years, and going back to the very early days before I became the BA, I remember that the district was charging religious organizations for classroom use and use of school facilities. So I don't think that was a recent change to that exemption. I'm not saying that may not have been the case many, many years ago, but for at least 15 years, we've been charging consistently religious organizations. And the policy previously was designed to recoup the district and the taxpayers' costs for running those facilities when the outside organizations are using them. In certain instances, religious organizations are even making a profit or charging admission on these events. So I don't know the reason that the board did not classify religious organizations into the tier-one user, which would be exempt from fees, but I could tell you that they are not. And that the policy has been applied consistently to at least three Christian organizations that I know of that have used the schools, and on the high holy days, at least two Jewish organizations that use the schools. And we are talking about a significant amount of money from all of those. You know, because.
Obviously, I speak on behalf of all of them. I don't think the Holocaust group is charged till today. There is some kind of leeway, however it can be applied.
What dates were, send me an email about that, and I'll be happy to look into it.
For this year?
Yeah, specifically the Holocaust group. I'll check that out.
Oh, no, the Holocaust group, I don't know the dates. I just know that I'm a member of that board, and the facilities are always given to them pro bono.
You know what? That's coming back to me now. I remember a board member who was on the committee many years ago, about a decade ago, who said that there is an educational component to that organization. They provide services and student involvement, so there may have been an exemption under that reason, but I'm speaking without preparedness on that.
We definitely have student involvement. And we're open to the community, no matter what people could afford. We don't have a mandatory fee like other synagogues in town, very, very much serving the needs of the taxpayer. I would love to hear about that. Thanks.
Be happy to discuss this further with you, if you want to send me an email. We could continue the conversation about the policy and explore the organization that you feel, you know, should have been charged and maybe was exempt.
The question was if the board has the right to change that policy at least counter it.
Certainly, the board has the right to change the policy and exempt anybody they wish from use of billing fees.
Now, given the pandemic, that's my request.
If you wish to put it in writing to me, when we communicate, I'll be happy to take it to a committee, and the board can discuss it.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's public portion. Anyone else in the public, please? Nope. Okay. Seeing none? Oh, wait.
Shall I announce my name again?
Yes, please, and your address, sir.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. The one comment I want to make is, there was the discussion with Madam President, the attorney here, about the public engaging. See, the difference between the public and the people around this table is you're elected. We have every right to ask you questions. You don't have the right to ask us questions, but we put you in those chairs. So we can ask anything we want. So let's just make that clear. Since the agenda came out this week with Dr. Alvich's retirement, there's been quite a few conspiracy theories floating around the town, unfortunately. I want to take you back in history, for those who may not know Monroe's history, or for those who simply forgot Monroe's history. We've had five superintendents and at least that many.
Interim.
Superintendents. In nearly the time it would take a child to go K through 12. 2001, Schner, Dr. Ferry in 2009, Dr. Hamilton 2014, Cozak 2018, and here we are again. Just looking at retirements the last year, in July of 2020, five retirements. August 2020, four retirements. Am I talking to this too much? I don't know. September 2020, 11 retirements. October 2020, four retirements, on and on, just on this agenda, 13 retirements. So why do I give you this history? You may ask. It's because not once did our board president step down after a superintendent left. In fact, if that had happened, Kathy Kopanowicz, as the board president, would have had to step down twice. Not once did we call for protests. Not once did we muddy the waters to overlook our systemic issues in this district. This is happening now because our district is being politicized by a select few in our community that have either failed to become board members, or by those that are upset that the rubber-stamp majority that lasted for far too long is no longer part of this board. It's happening because the focus is not on bettering our school's education, it's happening because members of the administration and members of this public community are purposely looking to undermine you, the board. The people that we elected and entrusted in our education system. In all the previous instances when we were losing a superintendent, never once, not once did a BA come out in the news, making a statement about our outgoing superintendent. In Schner's case, it was the VP. In Ferry's case, it was the president. In Hamilton's case, it was the president. In Cozak's case, it was the president. Why did this happen before the board addressed this personnel issue tonight? To me, it looks like another blatant act to undermine this board and the chain of command in this district and the policy that is set. If we want to embrace the word catastrophic, we should be using it to describe the exact situations that are catastrophic. Severe overcrowding in the schools, failing infrastructure and buildings, education ratings and scores declining, not having our schools blue ribbon, all of them. Staff morale being at the lowest, just ask your staff. Lack of fair funding, and our taxes as taxpayers going up. I guess I can't finish.
I've allowed everyone else to, so.
Thank you. Or holes in our special education system, teachers having to march in front of schools for their contracts. So while I appreciate, oh, and one more, sorry, better yet, catastrophic event when we let our BA, who entered into a consent decree with the Attorney General, simply get swept under the carpet, being paid by our tax dollars. So while I appreciate the work of Dr. Alvich, and I certainly do, and I know all of our kids do, and her dedication to this district, and I wish you well, sadly, this is not the first superintendent, I'm almost done.
Okay.
That has left Monroe, and it will not be the last superintendent who has left Monroe. We should all rest assured that the hundreds, I think I heard 1,200. Dedicated people working in the district will ensure that our education system will go on, and our kids will get an education. Last thing I'll say, Steve Jobs once said, "Great things in business are never by one person."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lillian McPherson, 5 Ellingham Avenue.
Could you adjust your mics, please? Thank you.
So I just wanted to make one clarification on something that a board member had said. They had mentioned that the board selecting an auditor might be deemed as micromanagement. It is the role of the board to appoint the auditor, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
So then it's not an example of micromanagement, is that correct?
I believe not.
Okay. And then separately, just from, and I know you're all aware, from New Jersey School Boards Association, I know a lot of, there've been a lot of delays in some of the BGT meetings as far as people getting access to documents, specifically maybe committee members at times. Two of the roles of the administration include not surprising the board and keeping the board fully informed at all times. So I just wanted to make a plea for the administration and the board to work collaboratively, especially with like, all the comments tonight about moving forward with the referendum.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We will close the public portion. Everyone in agreement? Yes? Okay. Public portion is closed. We will next be going into closed session, the resolution to read. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through, could I have, could I have, quiet, please, while I'm reading Chapter 231 of the Public Law. Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And this will be the first time that we will be presenting the evaluation, the superintendent's evaluation to her. So again, let me correct some misinformation that is out in the public. Dr. Alvich was given her evaluation the day after she notified the Board of Education that she was going to retire. So let it be very clear that unless somebody had some confidential information that they gave to the public, Dr. Alvich's retirement was announced first. And it just so happened that there was an extension of the superintendent evaluation from the state. It's usually due on June 30th. However, there was an extension given, and under certain circumstances that we could not prevent, we postponed the evaluation until tonight. So Dr. Alvich will be discussing her evaluation with the whole board. But again, that was after she announced her retirement. We will probably, the time is about, oh goodness, it's 11 o'clock, depending on the HIB.
That would only take about five minutes.
Few minutes. I would suspect that we will be back in session at 11:30 at the latest, and I don't believe we will be taking any action on that. We just present it and...
Correct.
And just so you know, also, Dr. Alvich, after this presentation to her, will have ten days to return her feedback to the board, and then we'll take it from there. So there will be no action taken unless no HIB action?
No, that goes on next month's agenda.
Okay. So no action will be taken, hopefully we'll be out by 11:30. However, we will give Dr. Alvich enough time to discuss things with us. Oh, you know what? There's one, we need a resolution for Mr. Nikotinsky to temporarily be...
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Let me say the resolution, be it resolved that Mr. Nikotinsky will take the meeting notes in the closed session resolution during Dr. Alvich's evaluation, not for the HIB. Yes?
Before that resolution is read, I don't think we ever had a discussion with the board to go into closed session, and all in favor?
Oh, okay.
Well, let's do them in reverse, right? So we want to have a resolution to allow Mr. Nikotinsky to serve as acting board secretary for the purposes of the closed session discussion involving the superintendent's evaluation, and then the motion to go into...
Do we need a roll call, or can we have a voice vote?
For that, you can do it by a voice vote.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Or recusing or anything? Okay, thank you, that is passed, right, Mr. Gorski? Next, Mr. Degliardi, since you're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. So you read the purposes for the executive session, so you simply need a motion to go into executive session for those stated purposes for approximately thirty-five minutes.
Yes, so moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we will retreat to closed session. Now, where are we going? Okay, ready? We have resumed our public portion. I see no one in the audience, but let me, just for the record, is there anyone that would like to make a comment? We are out of closed session, however, there is no action to be taken. And seeing no one in the audience, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Let me just wait. When is our, does someone have, when is our next meeting?
August 18th.
August 18th will be the next Board of Education meeting. Okay? Motion to adjourn again, let's try that again.
Webex.
Feast of San Giuseppe.
We are adjourned, motion is passed.